All right, why don't we go ahead and get started? We've got a lot on the agenda. So, the first item that we have on is the split lot issue.
Should we turn on?
Yeah, we're on. We should be on.
Mr. Duncan, you're always on. You're always on.
Thank you.
Okay. Our first item on the agenda is the split lot issue. And the council last discussed this in the fall. And we had recommendation, recommended language that had been developed by staff for the city council's consideration at a joint session of the planning commission and the city council. And the city council asked the planning commission gather more information on this, study this issue, and then provide a recommendation back to the city council on this item. And they have done that in a letter addressed to the city council that was delivered by the chair of the planning commission last week. And so tonight, what we would like to do is just have Mr. Snyder provide some details as to what the planning commission's process was. They had some public input. And to their recommendation, describe that. And then also, just go into more detail with some mapping that's in your package as to exactly what the scale of the issue is in terms of properties around the city and how this language would address it.
And I think it's important to acknowledge that we've got two of our planning commissioners here. We have the chair and vice chair in the audience with us. So if we've got any questions or if the chair wants to make any comments, please, please. Three, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Andy Becker.
Recommissioned to the vice chair.
So, we're happy to have the chair make any comments if she wishes as well.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and members of the commission, as the manager mentioned, the planning commission did hold a listening session, which was an advertised public hearing where people were able to come and say what they thought about the possibility of changing the zoning ordinance along the lines that was recommended by the city manager and the city attorney and planning director to the council back in April of 2012. And this essentially was a legislative change that would say that if you had contiguous substandard lots, they would be considered combined if one home straddled the contiguous lots as of a certain date and if that home was using both of the substandard lots for setback purposes. And that shows up on the second page of the planning commission letter, and it's the same language that was in the memorandum that was put together back in April, rather in August, I'm sorry, of 2012. The planning commission is recommending that that be approved. We have come up with a fairly aggressive time schedule that would conceivably put first reading at June 10th by city council. Planning commission public hearing July 1. Two dates possibly for second reading by city council, July 8th or July 22nd, with effective date of ordinance being Wednesday, July 31st, 2013. I think the thought here is that there's been a lot of time and discussion about this. We've had a number of instances where houses have been taken down and two houses put back up. It's caused a lot of community concern. This would address that issue directly. There has been a good amount of time for those who want to take advantage of the present situation to do so. And so, the recommendation would be to move quickly on this and get this change made. We've done some mapping, which estimates how many lots and houses would be affected. There's an overview map, which shows 483 lots with 234 houses, which have houses that have lines intersecting beneath the house location. Then there is a key, which shows that same map with 11 different sections, which show in more detail how those houses actually fit on some of those lots. Now, there are instances where some of these small lots have a house on them, and they are, even if the house were torn down, there would be no real likelihood of one being able to build another house on the extra lot. For example, on page 2 Fulton Avenue, you'll see a lot of very small lots, which were a very old subdivision. And you have existing houses, some of them new, that are on those lots. But nonetheless, this is trying to show all of the situations where we have houses on lot lines. And you'll see generally, the pattern of houses is relatively dense. This is not, the houses are not all spread out. It's, you know, they're not big gaps in the streetscape, if you will. So, we think this is a reasonable way to proceed. The planning commission, I think, did a good job in listening. You've heard individually and I'm sure collectively about concerns that people have about the present practice. This is a needed clarification that follows up on recommendations of the zoning ordinance advisory committee to fix this problem. And we think a direct fix, as recommended by city manager and city attorney, is the best way to go. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Shields?
We're here to answer any questions.
Chair Rogers, anything that you'd like to add?
Yes. Actually. As I said at the planning, I mean, at the city council meeting, the planning commission has been very supportive of this, and we really would like to move ahead. This afternoon, I saw some additional language. I don't know if that's language that you're considering here tonight? No? Okay, that's really all I wanted to know, because I think that we've had a lot of hearings on these and a lot of discussion, and we've listened to people who have a one house on two substandard lots and from developers. We've listened to just about everybody in the entire city. But, we would like to go with the language that we had in our letter, and we think it's important to move it quickly so that we can have some certainty in our code. I think that's one of the problems, is people don't know how it's going to be interpreted when they're in this situation or when they actually do sell their property. And it's always just a little bit different. So, we would like some clarification in the code so that we don't have to rely on different interpretations with each situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think, based on some of the, my understanding on looking at the documents and some email exchanges that I had with the city attorney and also Director Snyder, the intent of the language this would cover is it would only cover situations when there's one house straddling two lots. It would not cover situations where there's one house on one lot, but it's using the other lot for its setback purposes. So, I think that's important to clarify.
Yes, that's the case. That would require a whole lot of analysis and create a lot of gray areas, which I think would be counterproductive.
This is a very narrow, or relatively narrow, as compared to some of the other issues that we've seen happen around the city. So, I'll open it up for council member questions at this point. Why don't we start with Mr. Duncan and work our way around? Or actually, I'm sorry, before we do that, I know that council member Tartar has been sort of liaising on this point, so why don't we have Mr. Tartar make any comments he has first?
Sure, thank you. I appreciate all the hard work that the planning commission did on this issue. I know I've had several meetings with the folks over the past months with the idea of, I think the idea of bringing clarity to this issue is important. There's been so much uncertainty in past years. It's been very divisive, I think, for the community. And I think it's just time to make it clear. So, anyway, that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Tartar. Councilmember Duncan?
Okay, so I understand the aesthetic and environmental and administrative clarity aspects of this, I think, from having listened to previous conversations. Your mention of a good amount of time for those who would want to take advantage, might be the right way to put it, but to develop their lots under the current sort of way that things have been interpreted. You know, it's your opinion that there's been adequate time for people who are interested in doing that to do so? Because my, I guess, only concern is that some number of these homes or lots, I'm not sure which number to use, either 234 or 483, will come forward to us and say, gee, you know, you're, this is a taking by some other means, and we're not able to do with our land what we thought we were going to do with it. Right? I mean, is that the concern that we're weighing against the other things that I mentioned first?
That's probably, that's a valid way to describe it. When I say there's been adequate time, when I first came here, working with the city more than two years ago, this was, I believe, actually before, there was a very big meeting in the council chambers with, about this issue. And since then, it's been a topic which again and again has been before council and planning commission, number of court suits. Those finally were finished, and we were able to make a recommendation and a summary of the possibilities in, at last August, where you all held a joint work session with commission. So, that's been a good amount of time. This would, this would get this done hopefully by the end of July. We also have other things we're working on. The commission has been dutifully working on the Greenway Downs overlay district. They've had a listening session on that. It was one of the items that ZOAC had recommended be dealt with. And there are other issues having to do with single-family house placement, which are important as well. Getting this one done, I think, would be an important step in letting those others go forward. Because as we look at trying to develop economically the city, we also need to be working on preserving and enhancing the residential character. Those two pieces of the city are both important.
Okay, well put. So, just to make it clear, this is going to address only situations where you've got one house straddling two lots, not the situation which, there have also been discussions in some of these instances where you did have two lots, one of which was using the other substandard lot for setbacks, or where we are deliberately choosing not to address that because your professional opinion is that's just a thicket that we shouldn't get into?
Yes. Some of those houses may have been built before there was zoning law in the country, for example, or subdivisions in place. And it just becomes a very gray area. I think it's pretty clear when you have a lot line that's crossed by a house or touched by a house. That we can figure out. The other, it would put a lot more properties in play, and I think you'd also have people trying to, you know, well, let's see, I'll get that extra yard, will be sold to the kids or to somebody else. And I think it would just create more problems than it would solve. It might create difficulty in getting this approved. So, keeping it simple and moving on to other more, other important improvements to the ordinance, I think is the best course for us.
Okay. So, and finally, if we proceed as you advise, someone could, if they were in that situation, come and ask for the right to develop a lot, which now they might be using for setback. And that would be an administrative review process still, or as it is now? Is that right?
Well, if it was a, I'm not sure I understood, if it was straddling a lot line, is that what you're saying?
No, no, sorry. If it were one using the other for setbacks.
Yes, it would, if it was, the unencumbered lot, the lot with no buildings on it, could be developed according to either standard lot requirements or substandard if it was less in size than the R1A or R1B standard.
And staff would, you know, look at the numbers and make the decision?
It would be handled as, and there are many such lots in the city. So, it's actually one of the reasons we have such a variety of house shapes and sizes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kaylin? Councilmember Barry? Councilmember Snyder?
Thanks a lot. I think I heard this comment a moment ago about keeping it simple. Well, in some senses it is, in some senses it's quite the opposite. So, let me try to understand, because I did read the last listening session. I want to thank the planning commission for that. And when you read the listening session, there's anything but consensus on this. So, let me go back to a couple issues. It appears that at one point, the zoning code was interpreted not to permit this. And then with a recent administrator, that administrative code, that administrative interpretation changed. Now, I guess the first thing I want before I proceed is an opinion from the city attorney as to what is the right interpretation of the city code. Not the need to defend an action by the administrator, but rather, I'm interested in a clear legal opinion as to what is the correct interpretation of the code. Then based upon that, we'll know whether it's a public policy that we want to change or we don't change. But there have been a variety of interpretations of this, and I think it's appropriate to go to the city attorney to determine just what does the current language of the code provide for. That would be point number one. Point number two, also a legal issue, is if we change the code now, after a series of recent administrative interpretations, although very contrary to prior administrative interpretations, do we subject the city to litigation? And if so, what's our litigation risk? So, I'm interested in that. The third issue I'm interested in is the notion that, let's take the same square footage, but it's one substandard lot as opposed to two substandard lots. Does this recent interpretation give a right to develop those two substandard lots even though it's the same square footage as one substandard lot that would not give you the ability to build two houses on it? So, in essence, has this recent zoning code administrator given a right to certain property owners that don't exist with other property owners even though they had the same square footage? Another question I'm interested to know about is, in this recent interpretation, does it, does that interpretation permit the construction of buildings without similar setbacks that would otherwise be required for one building on a similar square footage lot if that lot were one lot? So, I don't think this is a simple issue at all. I think the listening session shows that it's not a simple issue. We do have property rights involved, but we also have the reality that appears that recent interpretations are very much at odds with historic interpretations. And so, when that's the case, I want to know what is the correct interpretation of the existing statute. And so, I would ask for that before we move forward on this. So, those are a couple of questions that I have to lay the predicate, and I think they're the same questions the community will ask. And again, when you look at the listening session, there is no consensus. There's also a process issue. I think citizens feel on both sides of the issue that our process is not functional and it's not transparent. And I think we need to look at that as well. And this is a process which has grown up over recent times, but particularly recently, we've seen criticism after criticism from all parties that the process is not working the way that it ought to in terms of transparency. So, I'm interested in pursuing that as well. So, some of, these are some of the initial questions that I have before proceeding into this yet again. Because every time we go into it, we find that it's not at all simple. And indeed, critical rights, both the community's rights and private property rights are involved. But, so for those reasons, at least the initial round of questions, those are some of the questions that I'd like to have answered.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Mr. Tartar?
I don't know if I really have a reply. I would say that I think what this proposed ordinance is attempting to do is address some of the concerns implicit in your questions. I mean, at some level, I'm not sure all the questions need to be answered in the sense that the city attorney's saying exactly what it means today. I'm not, I mean, personally, I'm not sure that's really necessary to say we want to add clarity. Maybe there's different ways to interpret what exists today. But the fact is, as a body, we can make it real clear. And I think that's the idea behind what's proposed and what's before us tonight.
Let me respond, if I might, Mr. Mayor. You know, that's right, but there are, there are competing interests here. And it's been said repeatedly that if the city were now to make a legislative action that reversed an administrative set of rulings, that that would be taking rights away from people. Now, I also listened to the other side that says, no, those rights shouldn't have been there in the first place based upon the existing ordinance. And every time I've asked for a legal opinion, it's always come back, it's been a process. Well, the zoning administrator has issued an order or an edict or whatever, and my job as the city attorney is to defend that officer, right or wrong. Okay, I got that, okay. But what I want to know is, the current ordinance, what does it state as a matter of law? And then based upon that, it seems to me, we're in a position to say we agree with the policy or it doesn't.
Mr. Rock, Kaylin?
Maybe this is a process issue. I listened to questions, I can't say I understood all of them, Dave. But isn't there any way that between now and the next time we talk about it, you could meet with the city attorney or meet with people rather than go over this stuff in this level of detail at this? It may be that there are easy answers for you, and we don't have to review this over and over again if the answers are there. So, perhaps a discussion with the city attorney or whoever would be helpful before we come back and discuss this again.
Please do, and I think the answers to the questions should be available to council and the community as well.
Of course, but that comes to that city.
So, if I, could I just ask? So, Mr. Snyder, if what, I heard you say, the nut of it I took away was if the city, if the council is going to act to, some would say, take away rights that the zoning administrator has been allowing, then do we open ourselves up to litigation or criticism? Or should we somehow deal with that? Is that?
I think before we take an action, because litigation has been mentioned repeatedly in the course of this discussion over many years, and I think it was referred to in the listening session as well, taking away property rights. And I want to get to the bottom of that. Is that in fact what we're doing, or do these property rights never really legitimately exist, and it was faulty interpretation that led to this? And I think we ought to know that before we go forward and potentially subject the city to litigation. It might have been otherwise preventable.
Thank you. So, so far, what I've heard, and again, you know, I think we've sort of gone around and around on this issue. I think that it's important for the council to also look at the other options and also get a sense if the planning commission also looked at them. Particularly, I was interested in option two, which is sort of the administrative rule change option, which would essentially put this back, the staff to sort out, rather than putting this into a political thicket. So, I know that that was sort of looked at in the memo and moved on. You know, my view about it is if there's a clean way of doing it and it's easy administrable and it gets us out from the political issues, you know, given that we're dealing with property rights, rather, my view is I'd rather not make it a political issue, and I'd rather have staff internally deal with it. If there's litigation that ensues, it's not a politically driven issue, whereas if it's legislative, it is. So, I'm just interested in learning more about why the administrative rule change wasn't proposed as an option. I understand, and one of the pros and cons was that it's not as legally foolproof as perhaps the legislative solution is, but I'm a little unclear why that may be the case. Because that still gets us to the same place, whether it's a legislative solution or administrative rule change. There may be some administrative costs with the administrative rule change and difficulty administering it, but I'd be, I'd like to learn more about that.
One thing I'll mention, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but there has been extensive legal wrangling on this, if you will, that went all the way through the Supreme Court of Virginia. And as I understand it, essentially, the present practice has been viewed as being upheld and being okay. You're the city council and the planning commission, and you have the right to rewrite and change the zoning ordinance to be in conformance with a comprehensive plan. I think, given the legal history that's taken place in the last couple of years, the best thing, and I think the one thing that was clear in the listening session, was people want clarity, one way or another. Let's know where we stand. And that's really why I think the manager, the city attorney, myself, all agreed that this approach where it's clear, you've got a house that straddles two substandard lots, that they're, it's considered combined, so that everyone knows what the rules of the game are. And you do have the right to, you know, write and change and amend and fix and make better your zoning ordinance. And the thought behind this was to avoid a situation where there was, it wasn't clear, it could be interpreted differently by different folks. So, that's really, that's the reason behind this approach.
But approach two, which is the administrative rule change, wouldn't, isn't that a mechanism of getting to the same thing?
And we talked about that early on, when, I believe, when I got here. But I think it's a subsequent legal contest, if you will, that went all the way through the courts, I think made it more difficult for that to be achieved, frankly. Every time a case was lost, depending on which side you were on, it made clear the other side, the, it made more clear that whatever practice was going ahead was in fact, okay. So, that's, I think that really is why you need to legislate a change.
I mean, maybe I could just make a suggestion. I agree with what Jim has just said, but it sounds like people want more clarity, particularly from the legal side of this. I don't think we ought to put John Foster on the spot tonight, as much as he would like to be put on the spot, I'm sure. But what, maybe I could suggest that we give him a little time to formulate response to some of the issues that are raised, and then consider his response and move forward and kind of try to keep this thing moving along.
Yeah, and I agree with that, Mr. Tartar. I don't think anybody was trying to put Mr. Foster on the hot seat tonight. I think this is a way, just for us to hash out what the legal issues are, so Mr. Foster can provide an opinion rather than it not happening in a, you know, fulsome discussion. So, I think we need to get a sense of what the legal issues are. That way, Mr. Foster can get back to us. So, I think that's the tenor of the discussion, not that we'd have answers this evening. Certainly, I think that, that's a recipe for bad decision making.
Mr. Mayor?
I guess, I guess I would just say, if I could just follow up, that we've discussed a lot of these issues. I've had discussions and others have had discussions, some of the meetings that have led to tonight's meeting. And I think there are responses to a lot of the issues and questions that were raised. I think it's best if they're not just kind of given, you know, right tonight without a chance to make sure that the implications of whatever might be said don't, you know, aren't negative in some other fashion. But I think there are a lot of answers to the questions that were raised already in existence. And so, I might just suggest that we give John enough time to formulate responses that he feels comfortable with, and then proceed as appropriate.
No, I think that's fine. And again, I don't think anybody was suggesting that we get responses tonight, but at least understand what the questions are, and if they've already been addressed in the previous meetings that not all council members were attendance to, I think that's, that's fair. We don't need to rehash all those issues if they've already been hashed. So, so as far as sort of the tally that I've been keeping is, Vice Mayor Snyder requested from the city attorney, what is really the best reading of the current code and what was the intent? And I think, Vice Mayor Snyder, I don't want to speak for you on this, I think the reason why you're going towards that is because if the intent was one thing, and it has been interpreted differently, then it may lead to one conclusion and not the other. Is that sort of where you're headed on this?
Yes.
And then two was, what is the litigation risk with changing the language with suits against the city, given the property right interest that may be involved? And then three was, I'm paraphrasing here, but does the current interpretation give advantages to individuals who may own such lots versus other lots that are otherwise conforming as far as what can be built from an economic standpoint? I think that's what you were driving at?
The question is, assume the same square footage of a substandard lot. You've got that, that, and then compare it to that same square footage that just happens to be two substandard lots. Have these interpretations given an advantage to one owner of, or combined owners of substandard lots that an owner of the same square footage would not have? And I think it maybe has done that. So, I want to know, because the first thing that people will say, and it's not a crazy notion, is you're taking away something that's mine. And they, I want to question, first of all, is that the case? Because again, the ordinance was read very, very differently, apparently, before the zoning administrator. So, I want to know whether that's in fact what we're doing. And I want to know as a matter of law, then what does the current code provide for? What is, what is the interpretation of the current code? And then what is the legal risk if the city were to make a change? And I'm not unsympathetic to making the change that's requested here, but I want to, I want to ask and answer the questions that our citizens are going to be asking us.
And I think the final question that I raised is, why not go with option two? Because this, which was rather than the legislative approach, the administrative approach, given that this seemed to have at least generated from given that this seemed to have at least generated from administrative decisions based on a code interpretation, a code that had been, I think, changed to provide clarity, but it didn't quite work out that way. So why not go back to an administrative approach, rather than trying to make it a legislative one? Not that, you know, and that's not to prejudge where I'm at with this, but I'd like to get an understanding of why we're going to dive into the thicket, if there's an administrative remedy that can be handled, before having numerous public hearings about it. All right, anything else? Okay. John, I think a lot of this is following to you. Can you give us sort of a reasonable timeframe when you can get back to us, so we can follow up on calendar?
Well, today is the 20th, so I would probably get back to you by really.
So why don't we, John, once you have that memo, why don't we bring this back to a work session if needed, and if not, we can calendar it, depending on where this goes at that point? Does that make sense?
We have a June 3 work session and a June 10 regular meeting.
Yeah, so we can try to bring it back during that work session?
Yeah. Would June 3 work, John?
Excuse me?
June 3.
June 3, yes.
So if you can, if you can get us the memo a day or two before the June 3, and then we'd plan on bringing it back for a June 3 work session? And if it's still, if we are where we're at, and if members still want to pursue moving it forward, that still gives us the June 10? And, and again, I'm not totally tied into the summer calendars just yet with folks. Can we just sort of get a sense of whether the, putting this through the summer makes sense, given the number of people that may be on summer vacations and all that?
We're all going to be here.
I know that we're going to be here.
All of us.
But I don't know if we've got a lot of members of the community that are out. So if we can just kind of take a look at that and see if that makes sense, to do it during the summertime frame? I'd hate to put this through and people say, what? This all happened while everybody was on summer vacation and school was out.
No, it's got to get done. It's been, this conversation has happened for, yeah.
Does, if we miss that first reading in June, then it does push it, push it, the final council action to August.
Okay. Which is worse. Yeah, so if we're going to get this moving, then we need to aim for the 10th. All right. So John, that means we really need that memo by the 3rd, for it to fit into the calendar. All right, anything else?
Just, just the process issues as well. I think both sides have felt that the process hasn't worked for them in terms of transparency and predictability, so I don't want to confuse the core issue with that, but I think it's clearly an issue that the citizens have repeatedly brought to us.
Some citizens.
I have to ask a question then. What would be an evidence that everybody's happy with the transparency in this city? How do you find out that people are, most groups are happy, even the side that maybe didn't get everything they wanted, they feel it was transparent and open, and the other side feels it was transparent? What is the proof of that? I mean, what are we looking for as a metric that indicates we've achieved that bliss point?
I will know when Ira is happy, and I will tell you.
And Mr. Kalin doesn't get red in the face, how about that? One other thing I should just mention on the merits is, I think at one point during the various discussions that have come up about this, the effective date of such a language change, if the council does wish to go with this, and that's the path that we go to, that may be another decision point of whether we do it effective, you know, on a short date certain, or provide some type of grandfathering. I think there had been some discussion at some point about that. And there's pros and cons to that. Mr. Duncan?
I'm glad you raised that. I was going to ask the same thing, because whatever we end up doing, what we definitely don't want to do is encourage some, you know, rush to develop single-family homes, which, you know, has some costs associated with it, I think. So I'm glad you raised that. I would like to know, understand a little more about what's ordinary and customary for grandfathering things like this, if we do it.
Great. And I think there's other localities that have made similar changes, so there may be examples of what other localities have done. John's shaking his head, so.
Okay, great.
Okay, all right. Thanks very much. So next step on this is to look for a memo before the 3rd by the city attorney, and then we'll bring it back for a work session on June 3. All right? And that, the goal is if we are going to do something legislatively, again, not to prejudge it, is the, we'd be looking at the 10th. All right. Thanks very much. We're on to the next item, which is stormwater. Thanks, Jim.
And into the fire.
Into, yeah.
Or into the stormwater.
Yeah, into the stormwater.
Council, we have before you a draft resolution that would set the rate at $18 per 200 square feet of impervious surface that would be the funding stream for our newly established stormwater utility. This is the rate that would fund the budget level that's been adopted by the city council as well on April 22. The first billing, this resolution would be effective January 1, and so the first billing would be in June of 2014. The rate resolution would be effective January 1. Yep. And so it would be effective for tax year, for the next tax year, and be aligned with our tax year. And then that rate would continue on for the December billing and then the June billing, and be billed at the same time as our, as our property taxes. That is what is envisioned with the, with the resolution that's before the council tonight. In addition, there's a resolution that would establish the big picture policy for credits. And then we would take that, the large aspect of that policy and work through the details of, of the ways that people can qualify for that credit with the utility commission. But the resolution would lay out the broad parameters of the policy. So that's a quick overview of where we are, and I wanted to provide Mr. Hicks with an opportunity to go through some of the things that this rate level would fund, the public improvements that it would fund, and the maintenance activities that it would fund, as well as respond to earlier questions from council.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight, members of council, Mr. Mayor. On April 22 of this very year, we approved a budget and a stormwater utility ordinance. So now we created the stormwater utility. We did that after, really, three years of dialogue, two years focused on the watershed management plan, and kind of culminating with that, how we're going to fund this with a resolution that you guys set forth in March of 2012. We then had a year-long dialogue about options for funding this, whether it was through a utility or ad valorem, and we approved a utility on April 22. That utility is to aim at three increased levels of service for stormwater management within the city. The first is to address the increased regulatory environment coming to us because of the Chesapeake Bay and the stormwater rules that are before us. And we figure that's about $100,000 of operating expenditures additional to what we're paying now, plus about $1 million in capital every year for 15 years. Then, we're also investing in rehabilitating our existing network. We've got 140,000 linear feet of pipe in the ground, and about 1,400, 1,500 structures associated with that. We figure that's worth about $80 million. That comes to the end of its service life significantly by the next 50 years. Some of it may last as long as 80 years. So we're, we're, the program before you has $1 million of capital rehab and reinvestment in that conveyance system. And then lastly, there's an increased level of operational effort to maintain this aging infrastructure and the new capital improvements that we'll be building for water quality. And so that's, that's in the budget that we approved earlier. That budget level is $1.643 million. And to achieve that budget, plus the $100,000 credit, would require an $18 per 200 square foot billing rate. And so, in this, in this package to you guys, there is a TR, a resolution, TR 13-15, which resolves that $18 per 200 square feet of impervious cover rate. We, what is in on page two of your staff report is the, is the report card that we worked through back in November, kind of lays out what that level of service is. And again, additional service is about $2 million of capital expenditures in FY14. 100% of those capital expenditures are debt financed, or will issue bonds and pay for them. And those could be general obligation or revenue bonds, depending on the financial instrument that is of best use at the time. There is an additional 6.65 dedicated FTEs in this budget. Four of those are for a stormwater crew to do dedicated stormwater work on a daily basis. And then 2.65 new staff members are to manage the capital and the permitting obligations associated with this increased level of service. And I have detailed those for you on page four, where it talks about, the total is 7.7 FTEs. Of those, one and a half FTEs are current paid employees, like Kathy Allen and myself, who are sitting here with you tonight. Then, the rest of the staff report goes on to describe the credit program. And the credit program, as we have conceived it, is two parts. First is a 30% reduction of the impervious area draining to a registered BMP with the city. So if you have had a development project or a redevelopment project in the last few years, you have likely installed a BMP as a part of that, a structural BMP, and that is on our register, and we inspect that annually, and you would get credit for that. And then, secondly, the, the, there is a 10% that's codified in here, in the resolution, for a stormwater pollution prevention plan reduction. And so that would apply to residential and commercial sites who have a SWIP, as we call it in the industry. And that would have to be approved by the Director of Public Works. And in that, for industrial sites, you would meet the industrial, the EPA's NPDES program for a SWIP. For non-industrial sites, commercial sites, and residential sites, we would develop a menu of choices of these best management practices. We would do that with a stakeholder group. We've got some, we've got some examples of what would be in that. And it's rain barrels and cisterns, rain gardens, zero scapeing, maintenance of one-site specimen trees, nutrient management plans, parking lot sweeping, household hazardous, or hazardous waste management, dog waste management, and community outreach and educational tools. And we would work with a stakeholder group that would include the utility commission to develop this menu of options, and that if you were to have an approved SWIP, then you would get a 10% reduction of your entire bill. We have set aside in the budget that was approved $100,000 to fund that credit program, and we would execute that as we move forward. I'd be glad to take any questions. We've brought Kathy Allen, our Superintendent of Public Works, here. If you have operational questions about how we might move forward.
Thank you.
With regard to all the mitigation, the, you know, mitigation slash credit programs that you've put in place, I think we all received a letter from a resident who brought something to my attention that I had not thought about, and that is the age of somebody's house. That if someone, I mean, here's an example, my house was built in 1910, and it had, you know, X viewpoint towards stormwater management. It happens to be built in a way that has worked favorably for me, but if you, but back in 1910, we probably weren't thinking about these sorts of things. You know, that's, that's something that I hadn't, I hadn't considered, and I don't think that any of our metrics or arithmetic have considered ages of houses in terms of their ability to, to put forward mitigation efforts. Or that there is, you know, that there might be a sliding scale in terms of fees. Is that something you've thought about?
It is not, and I have to beg your pardon, I might need a little bit more explanation to think it through. I'm not, I'm not quite sure what's being asked.
Well, what's, what's being asked is that houses that were built, say, in the last 20 years, may have, and I don't know this, but this was something that was brought to all of our attention in this, in this email that we got, may have anticipated, by their very design, you know, addressing stormwater, or at least being cognizant of stormwater issues, as opposed to houses that were built 50 years earlier, which may not have had any concept and/or, you know, design feature that would have appreciated or dealt with stormwater. We'd have to, we'd have to talk to this particular homeowner, because I'd never, I'd never thought about it. But it's, it's an interesting issue. Should, should there be some allowance for the age of houses in this city?
I think the notion was sort of older homes, stormwater management was never sort of in the design.
Right.
They generally had less impervious surface, whereas some of the newer homes should have been thinking about it, because stormwater was front and center, so it should have been part of the plans of the home, so therefore they should bear some type of responsibility greater than some folks who may own older houses where those issues weren't thought. That's how I understood that, you know?
So a couple of things I'll say is, if your house was built in the last few years, then certainly you've had to meet the Chesapeake Bay obligation, and likely you've had to put a structural BMP on your property. And we, those will be credited. If it's registered, it's maintained in good stead, they will be credited. So in that respect, we've thought about that. The beauty of the path that this council has chosen with a utility over a ad valorem approach is that if, in fact, an older home was built with less impervious cover, then there is less impervious cover for which to base a fee, and by that very nature, would have a lower fee. So it, so that, in that respect, that has been thought of. And lastly, the 10% reduction would be available without the structural BMP. That would be, that would be available to all homeowners who would, who would meet the criteria for those menus, the items on the menu of options. So I feel like the answer is yes, that all of that has been thought through, but maybe I still have not got my head around it.
Mr. Duncan?
I appreciate you all trying to articulate that, because I've heard some of the same comments, and haven't really been able to describe them in a way that, you know, staff could respond to. But there is a certain feeling, I think, among older homeowners of older homes, many of which do have, say, a long driveway, or, you know, because the houses tended to be smaller, and maybe it was more paved surfaces to get to the houses, or whatever. They do have more impervious cover than you might build that house if you built it today. And there, I do hear a sense of, oh, it's just not fair, you know, I didn't, I didn't get to choose the amount of impervious cover on my property. That was just the way it was. That was the way all houses were. I bought my house, haven't done anything bad. And I, I feel that is a, something that I vaguely had a sense of when we were talking about it, you know, back in February and March, but I couldn't articulate it, and I have heard that. So I don't know quite where to go with it. I guess one place to go with it would be to ask, the credit program itself, to me, given the size of the discount, for instance, if the average fee is going to be $252 for a property, say, like I live at, the classic quarter acre lot, then my 10% discount would be?
Twenty bucks.
Twenty-five bucks. Okay, well, that's not really a very serious discount. I mean, that's, that, to me, makes this look more like a, you know, program to collect money to run a stormwater utility, than a program to mitigate the impacts of stormwater runoff. And that's not said in an accusing way at all, because it is an attempt to build a stormwater utility. That's, I get why we're doing that. But I just wonder if, if there is some way to incentivize or assist or increase at least the option of earning a higher credit, so people will feel like there's something in it for doing that. I mean, there really isn't anything in it for them to do $25 worth of I mean, there really isn't anything in it for them to do $25 worth of work. You know, would the, what would the financial impact be if we at least increased the limits on the possible credit, anticipating really that most people probably wouldn't take advantage of it, but giving them the idea that they had a choice to? Does that make sense?
Can I respond? What, one of the things that we have tried to do is that the credit program, we believe has to have a nexus with what you're actually discounting, what, what things you might not have to spend on the program. If you give a credit, then that's that much money we don't have to spend. And the things that are in here are significantly about water quality controls, which we figure is about 30%. We've had our, our consultant go through our program and he figures that this program, it's about 30% of what we're putting into the program. If you put a structural BMP that addresses water quality, then that's 30% less than we're going to have to do with the runoff that comes off of your property. And so there's a nice tight nexus between that. Now, what our, our solutions for stormwater is a whole toolbox of stuff that we've got to do. And big, big places like Fairfax County, you've got 3,000 ponds, that's part of your toolbox. Those are not here for us. But things like structural BMPs are part of our process, nutrient management plans, all of those things are tools. And what is, what an individual property owner would do is one tool and, and part of that holistic approach to stormwater. And that homeowner is also going to have to drive on our roads, that homeowner is going to visit our parks or our city government, and those areas also have to be dealt with for stormwater. And so if your program is trying to capture all of that, and yet we raise the discount well beyond the nexus of what you're, what you're actually benefiting to the program, it's, I don't want to say it's disingenuous, but it is, it is not in keeping with the fairness that, that we're trying to approach, that this is where the stormwater problems are and we're going to try and address them with a, with a holistic approach with the program. And that's my two cents worth. Now, it's certainly your prerogative to take that wherever you want it to go. What we've suggested has that nexus to where the benefit is.
Ms. Kelly?
Really two comments. One is more of a philosophical one. The society, the US society today is run through with all sorts of tran, intergenerational transfers. Older people get social security theoretically paid for by the people who are still working. Schools, on the other hand, benefit from those of us who don't have kids in school, so there's an intergenerational transfer through property tax to the younger generation. It's rife with these transfers and getting it to be fair is simply not, you know, there in everybody's mind isn't going to happen. That's really something. What about, I could see this as a real estate advertisement. You know, somebody new moved to a 100-year-old house, have a lower impervious surface charge, but it's a new owner. It isn't the same person who built the house, probably isn't. So, I mean, and you're going, now you're going to talk about some litigation stuff? Now you're going to have some fun parsing out who is and how much to do. That's the, on the philosophical side, I think we do our best to can't, to be fair if there are egregious imbalances, they should be addressed. But it's not possible to match intergenerational costs and benefits. We just do the best we can and there's always going to be, you tear that sheet, it's going to have rough, you know, rough edges to it. The other thing is separate and unrelated to that, would it be possible to have sort of, not a bill, but somebody says this is not a bill, but indicate to individuals how much their bill will be in June, sometime early, and then with who they can contact and how to get these benefits, these particular, so that you get a little bit of a head start rather than wait till June to get the rush?
The answer is yes, and we absolutely believe that, that's critical to, as we roll forward.
Other council members? Ms. Berry?
I want to look at the program on page four of the attachment. And we're hiring under this program about eight people. I'm interested to know if we've done a cost benefit analysis, whether contracting out for these services might be more efficient, because I know we'll get that question. Second question we're going to get is from our businesses and nonprofits. Typical business here has a lot of asphalt. They're going to get pretty, hit pretty hard with this. Being a fee, it's not deductible. I don't know if it's deductible as a business expense or not. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But I don't think the case has been made to them yet sufficiently that what they're going to see is a cost and they're not going to see the benefit. So the question is, how do we explain to them and to all the payers what they're getting in return? I know that there's a certain list of projects and a whole lot of employees that we're going to be hiring. So I think we're going to get a lot of questions about efficiency, we're going to get the questions about credit that were mentioned, are the credits really meaningful? And then I think we need to fully indicate, because in large measures, I understand it, we're doing this because if we don't do it, the penalties will be severe. And what would those penalties be if we don't do this? We know the costs of, you know, Tropical Storm Lee, which were pretty severe for those involved, so I'm very sensitive to that. But I just, I'm not sure the case has been made yet to the business community and the nonprofits, why this is a benefit to them and why should they, and have this, take on this additional financial cost?
Just to clarify, I don't think this was to be measured in a specific benefit.
You create the cost, you create the stormwater runoff, you've got to cover what it takes to mitigate that. That's your benefit. It's a societal benefit. This is like all the, this, everybody, some of us don't have stormwater problems, gladly pay, because it's an obligation to all the citizens that they get. As far as checking out for outsourcing this contract, you can check, but you have to have a certain number of people who report to the city. Businesses come and go. The day it's in the business interest, contractor's interest to say, I don't feel like doing this anymore, that's the end of the contract and you're stuck with nobody to continue on. So you have to decide what it is can be outsourced and what has the core services you need to retain in the city.
I appreciate that some council members support this and are ready to move forward. I know that we're still getting questions from the community that are really basic questions. And I think it behooves us to be responsive to that.
I mean, I think one thing we've done before in other areas where we need to do public outreach is do a Q and A that we put in. So the lead one would be, you know, why are we doing the program? Two-fold, one is because of the new state requirements and then two would be, well, federal and state, they're passed through the state as I understand them, the Chesapeake Bay requirements, and then two to meet our infrastructure needs. You know, another point would be the reason why we're doing this is so it's not competing with every other need that we have. And two, that this program is the fairest way based on who's contributing most to the stormwater management issues. So I think just a very factual Q and As. I think the schools, as I've mentioned before, do a very good job in sort of getting their message out through questions and answers, so something very short. I think that we did that on some recent items, so that may be a way of addressing what we're hearing and questions from the community.
Is that a, a meeting or is that a document?
It's a document.
Different from our page that's dedicated from this now that's on the website? That would be-
It's already there. Perfect.
Okay, I believe that it is there.
We do have, we've had many town hall meetings on this and so we've taken that material and had it public. And, you know, a lot of times it's just a question of getting people to read what you do, have out there and that, but, you know, the case is of water quality, which is a mandate. We must comply with these federal regulations. We want to mitigate flooding in people's properties. The watershed management plan lays out those projects, so we have them in front of us. We know what the prioritaries list is. And then lastly, we have $140 million asset in the ground that is all on average of 60 years old and, and we need to maintain it. So those are the big three and, and we'll continue to carry that message forward.
And I think, you know, I think the biggest question that we're likely to getting, going to get is, is council and representatives and from the city is, well, I'm paying this fee, why is my house still getting flooded out by stormwater the city should be managing? When is my, when is it going to be my turn now that I'm paying the fee? I think that's likely going to be the first question and it's going to be, you know, the answer, it's going to, can't do all the projects at the same time, we don't have the capacity or the funds to do that, that it's going to be a, still going to take us time to do it. But that's just the reality of it. But I think that's the question that I'm already hearing coming up.
Ms. Callan, Ms. Berry?
I think that is the question that really needs to be addressed. The other, you know, we all talk to different people in the city, apparently. The people that I talk to who have stormwater in their basements are very anxious and they don't seem to be as troubled about the transparency and the questions and so forth as the people that you talk to. I don't know who's talking to whom. Any, I haven't heard those comments presented to me and I travel, I walk around the city all the time talking to people. But your point, Nader, is for the people who do have stormwater, they're going to say, when is it my turn? And that would be something you need to be prepared to, to respond to.
Barry, and then Ms. Brown.
And, and I, I would say, you know, that this question has been answered. I'm, I appreciate Mr. Snyder's, you know, sensitivity to the, to the electorate and I think we, we all are sensitive to the electorate and, and as, as Ira points out, we're all talking to the same people. You know, we don't have wards, we don't have districts, we all walk around, we're all talking to the same people. From a staff standpoint, we've answered the questions, you've answered the questions, we've had town halls, I've been to those town halls, I see blessedly the same people, I don't see a lot of different people there. We've had a public process, we've had transparency, you have information on the website. Those who do not, who are not satisfied with this process will not be more satisfied with, with more dialogue. They will be satisfied if, if the rules of the game change. So I would, you know, I appreciate, so first of all, I would just say in terms of public information and public process and transparency, I think the city staff has done it. I think in terms of water in your basement, and let's not mix up stormwater with sewage, for crying out loud, we've already had that conversation, I think the city has laid out a plan, staff has laid out a plan about which, which, which projects are going to come and which, which-
Order.
Order, thank you. Again, you may not agree with those projects, but that's, but the city has been transparent in terms of how that's happened. So I really would not like to see any more time spent on outreach insofar as I think there has been sufficient outreach. Certainly if there are questions, staff and council should be ready to answer them, but, but we have, we have gone around this multiple times. I, I would say, strangely enough, I agree with Mr. Duncan, so let the record, let the record reflect that we've had a moment, in which I think that the mitigation efforts, you know, that would, that would give you 10% off a $250 bill, you know, we might want to consider it. I would just, I'd like to spend a moment and just a tiny moment thinking about whether that might be, you know, 15 or 20%, but not a whole lot more than that. I just, I just do think that, that 10% is an interesting number because should you take X amount of, you know, steps and get 25 bucks knocked off your bill, is that really going to make you do anything differently? Not so sure. Is 40 bucks off your bill going to make you do anything differently? Not so sure about that either. So I'm not going to agonize, Mr., I'm not looking behind you, Mr. Hicks, but if I were looking behind you, I'd see somebody shaking his head vociferously. But I'm not looking behind you, so I wouldn't even know that I'm addressing anybody involved with, oh, I don't know, Chamber of Commerce or the business community.
Ms. Hicks?
I think, I think we'd be glad to entertain your direction, but I think we would, we would appreciate direction from council as to what that number is. I mean, I think we've offered you the nexus and if you want to take us to a different place, then certainly that's your prerogative and we'll follow suit.
I would love to-
I just want to make sure I understand Mr. Hicks' point before we go too far down the road on this. So as I'm understanding what you're saying is the credits are tied to the amount that you would be saving from the program. So it's essentially a one for one.
Right, and certainly that's not exact, but we've-
But that's the intent.
That's the intent. We've gone through the program, we figured that about 30% of what's spent on the program is for water quality focused efforts solely. And so that's where we drew the structural BMPs. Now you can have a structural BMP and you can have a SWIP and then you've got 40%. So now we're at 40% and we think the benefit to the program is the 30%. So if you want to take it to 50%, you're, you're welcome to do that. But there's still costs that have to be expended for stormwater.
Right, right.
And this is a- And we've had a lot of internal discussion about this as well. The worry about having it go beyond what our actual cost is, if you, if you break that nexus, is that there's a smaller pool of people will be paying more. And so there's an equity issue.
Right, right. So I mean, I think this, this approach makes sense. I think, you know, my, my view is if we were trying to create further incentives, it's providing that you could do more to reduce whether it's quality or flow issues by adding more things that you could do, therefore get more than that credit because you're contributing less. So you would have to go essentially beyond that, the minimum things that we, we've listed. And that, that may be a way of possibly approaching it. I don't know enough about whether that then just, they're too expensive for it to do anything and, but I think from a public policy standpoint, that's, that's how we would want to structure it, is here's sort of the basic minimum of this is how you can get some very, you know, they're fairly inexpensive what we're talking about as far as the SWIPs. And then if you want even more credits to really make it more meaningful, you have to do more, whatever that more is. I'm not sure if there is more, but I think, I think trying to keep it one to one makes sense. That's my view.
I think the model you might be looking for is in Roanoke and what they allow for is that you can go beyond their minimum if you treat water from off your site. So if you, if you're a commercial entity and you're bringing water through a private BMP from our road network or otherwise, then you can, you can go beyond.
And this may be more complicated for our city situation, but a lot of environmental programs, you can buy credits, for example. If you're not doing something on your site, you can buy technically credits for another site, but I'm not proposing that we do that here.
Urban offset.
Yeah, that gets very con-
Not, not.
Yeah.
Mr. Hicks, I'm sure you've thought about that, but-
Those are, it's kind of an apples and oranges idea. That's really, according to our Chesapeake Bay program, you've got to do so much water quality improvement on your property. And in some jurisdictions, they allow a fee and lieu or a credit program where you buy the credit from somewhere else. Now that is very different than the type of credit we're talking about.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I think that's much larger jurisdictions with industrial types of usage probably or better suited for that than we, than we are. Mr. Duncan and then Mr. Callan?
What you just said actually stuck in my mind. You can go beyond the minimums if you treat water off your site. So this is really down in the weeds, but that's why we have work sessions. So most of the water that's in my backyard comes from my neighbor's yard. It runs right off their roof and right down through my backyard. I mean, I don't know how many other people in town are like that, but my drainage problem and the drainage problem of the neighbor next to me is caused by the house over, you know, one from me, two from them. So I just put- So I just put that out there as a situation that some homeowner might reasonably come forward and say, you know, could I be eligible? And you probably have thought out how that might be handled. So that's just something, you don't have to answer that right now. Because I don't want to get down lost in the weeds here. I mean, the whole objective here, and I voted for it, so I'm with it, is to, you know, build a stormwater utility which deals with the problems that, you know, we need to deal with. And Mr. Kalin and others persuaded me that this was the equitable way to collect the money and so that's what we're doing. To what was said about stormwater and sewage, although we know they're different, as I understand the way that you have constructed this staff, the stormwater and sewage people are kind of joined and working pretty closely together, right? So if there is a sewage problem, the people who are doing stormwater are talking closely every day with the sewage folks, is that right?
Right, so, right. Some of them may be talking so closely, they're talking to themselves.
They're talking to themselves, okay. I think that's good because when I explain this thing to people who are not happy about paying more, I say, look, this is a twofer, you know, we're going to have an integrated stormwater sewage utility that's answerable to us, it's not contracted out because you do hear people ask that, that's a reasonable question, they're here, dedicated staff, you know, people who you know, we can call. I find that to be a selling point. I'm really just only hung up kind of on the amount, it just, and you know what, I'm, I think rather than keep people here longer, what I want to do is talk to Tim Stevens and the Environmental Services Council. If the environmental community thinks that, you know, the incentive structure here is appropriate to encourage people to do what they should do environmentally, or if we could do a little bit more and make it kind of something that the community could get excited about rather than something that they would just sort of say ho-hum to, you know, 25 bucks. I'd like for people to be excited about doing a rain barrel. I mean, let's get, you know, first year, maybe even just the first year, you know, we'll give you 50 bucks the first year for doing a rain barrel. I don't know, just looking for ideas to get people behind this so that it's a good thing that does what we want it to do. So there it is.
Mr. Kalin, did you have a second?
Again, the sociology of this is, is unknown, whether people respond to 10% or 15%. People who are environmentally conscious will do it, will do it because in their, in their value system, it's the right thing to do. They get a little bit of money for it, so maybe, maybe they can get a photo in the news press or something like that.
It's a good idea to?
You know, to.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
You know, to, to show, you know, the appreciation of the city. But I don't think, I don't see the credit as a calculation that an individual's, if it's, you know, if it's 10%, I don't do it, but if it's 12, I do. You know, I don't, I don't see, I think it's a.
I agree with that. I mean, I would go, if you asked me, you know, what do I want, I'd say 30% credit first year and just leave it at that and then see what kind of money we end up paying out. And if we aren't raising enough money to pay for the stormwater utility that we've built, then obviously we've got to change it. My understanding is we are going to be having the opportunity at least to talk about the financing of this every year, right, when we talk about taxes. That would be my pitch, you know. If anybody wants to bite at that, that's their prerogative.
Were you done?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Other council members?
No, done.
Mr. Carter?
Question or two. When were you proposing to hire folks? Like when are the new people going to arrive?
Well, you've, you've ceded the, the stormwater utility with the monies, the surplus monies. So there will be monies going in July 1. We will phase in how fast we hire. Certainly there are some folks that because we'll be sharing them with sewer, we probably won't need them early on, but we will need them by January 1. But the sooner we put a crew together and we could work with a crew of three earlier, then the sooner they could be doing work. We need a crew of four by the time we're all said and done because we need to be able to do the work in the roadway and otherwise, but we could do some really good work with a crew of three, so we could, we could hire a little bit later for some of those members.
Maybe, is it seven people you're hiring?
Right, it's 7.7, I believe is the.
And so you're thinking of hiring some of the folks?
Me, I'm sorry, 6.65.
And so you'd hire some of those folks like in the fall or something like that?
As soon as we, we move ahead with a resolution, we'll start beginning to advertise and that process is not, it's, it takes a while to get through. So some of those would not hit the, and we have the capacity to only interview so many people at once. So it would be very difficult to hire all the positions at once.
This is a question for the city manager. So the water sale goes through, I know there's a lot of employees, is everybody going with the water system or some of the folks for this program going to be kind of peeled off? Are there people that kind of work for the water system who aren't going with the water system who might be underemployed after the water system leaves?
Well, with the water system sale, every water employee is guaranteed a position with Fairfax Water. And so that job is there available to them. However, if there are vacancies in the city for any position, those are, there's always an internal recruitment for those and water employees could, could make that personal decision that they'd rather have that job than, than move Fairfax Water, to Fairfax Water if they're qualified.
But so, but aren't there a bunch of part-time jobs that are job shared between Fairfax Water and the city? Then none at all? Okay, I don't know, I was under the impression that some people did part-time this, kind of like how you're sharing, like kind of job sharing?
Well, there's lots of positions, positions where there's a share of them that is allocated between the sewer and the, and the water system, yes. But all, essentially there are very, there's only three full sewer employees. Everybody else gives a small portion of their time.
To the sewer, to the water?
To the sewer.
The only reason I'm asking all this is I'm just wondering if once this water sale goes through, we're going to have people who, we got extra people floating around or, you know, I don't know how all this is going to play out, but to me, there's a possibility that the box is a little different size and the amount of people are a little different size and something's probably not going to work, line up exactly. They're going to have too few people, we're going to have too many people, is my guess come January 1 with the waters, if it were to go at that time. I suspect everything does not going to fit and match perfectly. And I would hate to hire people on one hand and then maybe not have too many people on the other hand. That's the only reason I'm asking all this, is to make sure we're right sized in all our departments without hiring people before we might, on the other hand, say we got too many over here because the water system's left. And I don't know the answer to any of those, that's why I'm asking you.
Yeah, well, there's no question that in the sanitary sewer side, we will be very understaffed. We can't operate a sanitary sewer system with three, with three maintenance workers. It needs an engineer, it needs, you know, a whole host of support positions that we won't have anymore after the water system is sold. So that's one very clear answer to that question. There are other aspects of it that might be more subtle, but that's, that's a, you know, that's a real clear one. We've not identified any staff overages that we'll have after the sale.
Labor this, I just want to. I'd say also I would just agree with Mr. Hicks' response that I don't think we want to over incentivize, you know, mitigation matters that have a limited effect. I don't think you want to say that they're worth twice as much as they are just to, just for the sake of it. So I would agree with the approach you've outlined as far as incentives go.
Vice President.
Thanks. I want to go back to just I need something on cost benefit analysis that we have, we have done an analysis and what we're proposing to do is the most efficient way to produce the results that we're trying to produce. Secondly, what would you say to the business owner or the, or the commercial property owner who's sitting on a lot of pavement because that's what they can afford to do? What are you going to say to them about this program? Somebody walks up to you and says, I'm a small businessman, small businesswoman, tough to make, tough to make ends meet. What are you going to say to them?
I think part of the question is what are we saying to them? Because we're having a great deal of dialogue with the Chamber of Commerce, with business owners.
What are they saying back?
With the religious institutions as well. I think they are generally saying, we get it, we understand there's a problem, we understand that there's stormwater infrastructure and, and that it needs to be taken care of. We understand the mandate piece of it. There is no question that for the larger businesses that have a lot of sidewalks, that it's a significant cost for them. And so I think the, it will be, as soon as the rate structure is adopted, and well, I mean, it's been going on for a long period of time, but we will want to make sure that people have sufficient time to plan for it. So that communication about what, what is the bill amount, we'll, we'll want to communicate that out to the business owners and to homeowners this year so that they can do their next year's budgeting with an awareness as to what the fee will cost them. It's one thing to say $18 per 200 feet, but they need, I think, some assistance to understand what that means for them individually. And, and so we'll be prepared to do that. But I, I think there is a high level of awareness about this program from the, the news coverage from, and from the outreach efforts that we've had so far. Undoubtedly, there will be people who are still just catching up with it now and will need to work with them.
So let me, let me go back to the question. What do you say to a small business owner?
That this fee is based on, on what are, what we need to be expending to take care of this infrastructure. And, and as I say, when we've had that conversation, I think there's generally been an understanding of, of what that need is and why, why it exists.
All right. Bill, one, one additional question that I had is given some of the recent redevelopment projects that have been approved by the council. I, I know that the city code requires that essentially the amount of water runoff that's being created has to be the same or less than what the current site is producing when the infill goes in. Are there sufficient incentives in place based on the legislation that we have that, given the amount of the costs and fees, is there sufficient incentives built in to say, yes, this is what the code requires, but if you reduce further the stormwater management and put in tools, that you're going to actually get a meaningful, so you're going way below the code as far as what the requirements are? Because, the reason why we say that, the reason why I'm raising this is because we're starting to see a lot of redevelopment interest in the city. Those tend to be large, impervious lots. Given the city's SC zoning and density and where we're headed, they're going to be impervious. So there could be a lot of incentives built in to say, not only are we going to ensure that we're at the same level, which is sort of meaningless because, yeah, okay, great, so you're not, you're not doing any, you're not making the situation worse, yay for you, it doesn't mean anything. But given that it's new, if there's ways of really incentivizing to go below what's being generated on that site now, I think that would, it could be very helpful. And I know I broached this a little bit, at least with some of the development projects or at the tail end, but I think if we're trying to meet some of the environmental challenges with some of the costs or maybe opportunities to do that on a larger scale because they're larger builders who have the, the money flow to do it, if you will, so.
There's, there's two, two things I would say is, one, is we anticipate being before you guys in the, in the coming weeks with a new stormwater ordinance and that's going to move us from that 10% reduction of pollutant load runoff to the new standard, which will be .41 pounds per acre per year. And that needs to happen soon because that's, that's the target that we're being held accountable for with the new Chesapeake Bay model. It's a rewrite of the entire stormwater ordinance, but that's one of the key, key foundations of it. Secondly, on a case by case basis, and I think of the Tenner Hills specifically, that I think ultimately we're working out in the site plan process, not the special exception. We have met with them talking about how as we make improvements upstream, we already know that it will benefit the watershed as a whole to hold back water that is not from their site specifically. And as the stormwater utility moves forward, that is a target of opportunity where we could leverage our capital monies to, to store water that benefits programs in the city while they are actually building their private sites. So there's, there's one, one strong example. Secondly, I've been working, we met with the city manager and Jim Snyder, our planning director, not long ago to talk about how to take the modeling that we're doing, the planning that we're doing and roll those into his small area plans, which will then be written explicitly where we need those targets of opportunity to enhance as these properties in our commercial areas and otherwise turn over, where we need to enhance to, to store water. One of those great advantages that you have when you're a Loudoun County or a Fairfax County is you've got a lot of space to have a lot of ponds, to have a lot of storage. We don't have that luxury. So the big properties that we own are the roadways. So we need, as part of our arsenal of tools, we need to be able to leverage those private developments and otherwise that are coming through our process, so.
I'm not sure if my question was answered, but I guess what I'm driving at is, do we have sufficient incentives given some of the infill in these large mixed-use projects to incentivize the developers in doing more than the code requires in a meaningful way? This sort of piggybacks on the question that Mr. Duncan had, but, but again, you know, we can only expect so much that individual property owners can do when they're not redeveloping their sites. I mean, typical resident isn't going to like start tearing up their backyard and redoing things, but we do have that opportunity, given the natural development that we're seeing and the fact that our code is incentivizing more dense, impervious usage because of the SC process. So my question is sort of the flip of that, given that we know that the code is doing that. Can we start on the stormwater side, do more to incentivize developers not to just meet the current requirements of the code, which is, don't make the situation worse and you pass, pass the, you know, you pass, but to say, you're going to take a hit because of the storm utility, so if you actually reduce your runoff substantially, you're going to get a significant break, which is going to be meaningful. And I'm, I'm more interested in that aspect, as long as we can do it for dollar to dollar, which I think makes sense than I am, say, on the residential side, just because of the expenses that are involved.
I think we would be very interested in seeing that rolled into our program. It is not, it, where I think that belongs is in this credit program in commercial areas. If you could hold back, if you could detain water on your site right now, that, that's where it should be. It is not in this, I mean, we could, we could.
Can we get, I'm just going to put it out there for the council, can we get moving on that like at lightning speed? Because we've got two possibly other projects coming forward that are going to be infill, that are significant acreage, and, and they're likely to be on lots that are completely impervious or, or that are almost entirely paved over.
I would venture to say that we could, we could draft that very much into the resolution that you have without much effort at all.
Okay, can we try to do that? I mean, as if the council's supportive and staff thinks that they can do that, I'm, okay, Gary's in the background for the record. Gary, I know that you're not speaking for the chamber, but from, from your body language, I'm, I'm suggesting that at least one, one member would be positively inclined.
Just for clarification.
We've been asking for that type of information since Bill met with the chamber the first time. And we also want to include places like Tax Analyst and the Spectrum who have done some water mitigation, stormwater mitigation things.
Great, thank you, Gary.
Without question, any existing BMP.
Would be covered.
At the Tax Analyst or otherwise, will be covered.
Right, right.
What are we, what are, I'm not sure what we're talking, I'm trying to give credits to businesses going forward, wouldn't they already be?
So, so what we're talking about again is we've got situations right now, which is under the existing code through the SC process, we're encouraging more density.
Yeah.
Which tends to lead to either more impervious surface or keeping the same. Ergo, the two projects that we're seeing right now that just got approved. So what I'm putting out there is can we provide even further incentives that are here, given that those types of projects are going to be, you know, essentially tearing everything up and rebuilding, ways of even going beyond the type of credits that we're currently offering, which would generally be only available on commercial sites that are being redeveloped just because of the scale and magnitude of the projects.
Trying to understand that, we're offering credits to businesses, to anyone who, who mitigates stormwater above and beyond the requirement, correct? I mean, aren't we, isn't that part of what we're already offering?
So, so what, you know, we treat, there's the water quality and the. So, what, you know, we treat, there's the water quality and there's the water quantity concern. And what I hear the mayor articulate is a concern over quantity significantly. And so, what we would do is, we would add a, we would add to the resolution some credit, and I don't want to be put on the spot to tell you how it would work right now, but it would be some credit that would allow you to, you would be able to capture that credit if you treated off-site water or additional water that goes beyond the current confines of the code. And it would be detention only, so it would be a water quantity credit.
Correct.
How would you, I mean, in terms of detaining someone else's water, you'd actually have to divert it onto your property, because essentially already, you're required to detain and treat water on your property, correct?
Exactly right, although, if you build a, if you have a hundred percent impervious covered area and you build something new, then almost, there's no way you're going to have to detain any water, because it's already at a hundred percent. So, a lot of sites, they don't have to do a lot of detention. And so, they could detain water that's on their site and gain this credit, or they could detain water that comes from our right-of-way, that's adjacent to their property, by pulling that water onto their property, which is not terribly difficult to do. In the case of Tanner Hill, they, their best management practice is going to be right at the edge of their property. There are going to be catch basins right at the edge of their property, so they could tie together very easily.
You're talking about basically taking off-site water and detaining or treating it onsite.
Or additional water onsite.
Well, your own, wouldn't you have to detain and treat already?
No, not if you, not if you're not increasing your impervious cover.
I mean, the best way to look at it, Councilmember Carter, is if you're building on a site that's already a parking lot, and you're utilizing that entire site, which you would normally be doing if you're under our SE, you have no detention requirements, because you're not adding any impervious surface.
So, you're saying, for example, like the roof of the Tanner Hill, they, all the runoff that comes from their roof, they can just shoot it right in the system, they wouldn't have to treat it at all?
Exactly. And we're talking about quantity control and not water quality treatment. It's a detention.
That's exactly the problem. So, under most of our existing code, unless you're building on a wooded site where you would have to detain, which we're not seeing in the development projects, they're coming up on used lots or et cetera, they're already impervious, they don't have to do anything. They can just shoot the water downstream.
As far as quantity, but for?
Quality is different.
Quality would be different.
Exactly right.
So, but aren't they going to detain already for quality purposes? In other words, isn't that how you get the stuff out of it, is by detaining?
There are many tools for quality improvement, and some of those don't detain it, most don't detain. And we could get into a hydraulics lesson, but the amount that you're concerned about for quality control is the early part of the hydrograph, and the part that floods is the later part of the hydrograph.
And one of our biggest problems on the residential side has tended to be flooding. So, there are going to be some opportunities to do that, two of the projects, and I don't want to single them out, one of them, as Bill mentioned, is right near one of our waterways, the other one sits upstream. So, I think getting going before those projects get into site plan, because both are very anxious to get there, I think would be very, very helpful, both from an environmental and economic standpoint, so. With council's indulgence, if we can try to add that in, we may need to discuss it a little bit beforehand. And Bill, if you need a bit more time, I think this is significantly important, that if you need a week to work it through, I want to make sure that we get this right, because I think there could be a lot of bang, bang here on those types of credits, more than we would be seeing on the residential. But I think, I certainly would support more time if you need that to get it right, and talk to the business community. Please don't do this without talking to the business community, but it sounds like they've already been talking to you about it. All right. Okay. Great. Thank you. Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Wyatt. Thanks, Kathy. Thanks, Richard.
So, in terms of next steps, though, just before we break, what is the expectation, then, from council in terms of the next steps on these resolutions?
New language.
New language is addressing.
You've got a new, a new part of the resolution. Is the expectation this comes back to work session?
I don't, council, councilmembers, how do you all feel about it? I think it could be ready for prime time.
I think it could be. And we could always defer if we need more discussion. Bill, if you think you need more time to develop the language that we talked about this evening, just let us know, and, you know, we could push it off a week.
I'm comfortable moving forward with due speed.
Does that include answers to the questions that Councilman Snyder posited?
I think so. I think there may be some answers, I'm suspecting, that are available, so I think we can get to that.
There are answers available to that.
Yep. So, if you can send those out to the rest of the council.
Okay.
So, this is on the agenda for next Monday.
Right. And the substantive change would be the language that we discussed this evening, and also.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. So, it'd be adding the new language, whatever Bill comes up with, but also providing Bill and staff an opportunity to just make sure that they calibrate that correctly, rather than just rushing to speed, because if we had to wait a week or two, it's not going to be the end of the world. I'd rather get it right, and I'm sure council would as well. And then two, just making sure that between the time Bill has, there's some outreach to the business community on the new language.
And also, can I ask, outreach to the Environmental Services Council?
Absolutely.
I would like to hear from them on both your suggestion, which I agree with, and also just the notion of credits and other jurisdictions that have credits. It's not so much the amount of money, but the purpose of the credit system.
And I guess, just, you know, as we're sort of brainstorming this out, the other way of tackling this problem would be simply requiring it in site plan for any mixed use, but that means possible shields, and I just want to make sure you're taking note of this. The other way of sort of doing what I had been suggesting is changing the code to actually require more retention onsite, you know, so it's not, you're actually retaining even though you're having the same amount of impervious surface, just making it a requirement that you do and no credit. Sort of another way of addressing the same public policy standpoint. So, if you can give that some thought as well, maybe doing it outside of this program, not providing a credit, but just saying, you have to do it if you're redeveloping a site.
It seems to me that that's almost, they're exclusive of one another, that we could move ahead with a credit program as we build the new ordinance to include additional requirements.
Yeah. I would suggest that we look at it both ways.
So, the first is the carrot, which is the credit program. The regulatory side of it would come with the stormwater ordinance, which I believe is scheduled to come to council in June, and so we'd be able to follow up right behind that with that regulatory discussion. We are constrained under state law, it's very much as a state ordinance, that we're carrying out state policy here. This is where we're wearing that hat.
We're constrained about how much we can require as far as stormwater mitigation goes on redevelopment?
Well, let me, let Bill speak.
I think there is a fair bit of latitude in terms of stormwater, but we do have to get credit from the Water Board, but we have to get permission from the Water Board, but I do believe that we have a fair bit of leeway under the current code.
Can you guys sort that out? I mean, so essentially, again, it would be two mechanisms. One would be creating the incentive through the carrot, which would be part of the credits, and then two would be changing the code requirement, saying, you shall have these measures in place when you're redeveloping a site to go below the, you know, don't make the matter worse, which I think is terrible. That's my humble opinion.
We can do that.
Which is the current status quo. All right. Thanks very much.
All right. Next up is an ordinance to amend Chapter fifteen of the city code relating to fees for development services and engineering of work. The last time these fees were looked at, last time these fees were looked at by the city council was in 2011, so it's been two years, and at that time, the council resolved to look at them every other year and try to have those fees set to cover costs, and also be mindful of what the regional fee structures are as well. And so, if I could ask Mr. Hicks just to hit a couple of the key points on the engineering, and then I'll come back and try to touch on a few of the things for planning in Jim Snyder's absence.
These, there are three areas. We have increased fees, mostly cleanup items, making them commensurate with the level of effort, and you'll see those on page five of your staff report. They include right-of-way, resubmittals, erosion and sediment control violation, numbers, right-of-way inspections related to work without a permit, pods and dumpster placement, that's not an increased fee, but a renewal fee, that it can't be out there just interminably. Damage to street scape irrigation is equivalent to the cost for us to repair that irrigation system. That's all contracted out, so it's very easy to make that determination. The increase to licensed tree contractors, we license every tree contractor in the city that works in the city. That fee has been twenty-five dollars since about 1984, I think, so that goes up substantially, but only to a hundred dollars. If you're working without a tree contractor's license, that goes up to five hundred dollars. And site plan, site plan reviews are increased by five hundred dollars. We are eliminating one fee, and that's the fee for block party. This was determined as just unwieldy and unmanageable after it was instated. We do not collect that fee now. We would simply remove it from the books. And then lastly, we would include three new fees, and the first fee is right-of-way permit fee. This is actually a lower fee than a standard right-of-way permit. It is to allow somebody who comes in and only does lane closures, so there's no actual work in our right-of-way. We're not necessarily retaining a bond, and so we wanted to streamline the process. We have a streamlined process and a streamlined cost. Secondly, is a right-of-way permit for major utility projects. These are large Washington Gas, Dominion Power. Those guys, they work in front of multiple houses all the time, and the way we're set up now, the way to make that really work is to have a permit for every house that they do work on. And it becomes really unwieldy to take those in across the counter, unwieldy for those guys to put the applications in, unwieldy for us to review them. So, what we want to do is allow for large projects to come in under one permit, kind of like a site plan, but not really, and be charged in a rate that's commensurate with the amount of roadway cut that they're going to do. Last, thirdly, a right-of-way permit for sidewalk cafes. We need a permit process to make sure that these are going in with proper insurance coverages and those sorts of things. And there'd be a fee for a new application, two hundred dollars, and an annual renewal of it, a hundred dollars. And lastly, there would be a, the tree preservation violations. We have existing tree violation fees, and they go up to the thirty fence, offense, but after the third one, it's not clear in the ordinance. So, what this says is that after the third one, for each additional, it would be a thousand dollars, which is the same as the third offense. So, those are where we're adding fees, we're removing one fee, and we're doing a little cleanup on several others. And I'd be glad to field any questions.
Questions, councilmembers? Mr. Duncan, why don't we go around?
Should we talk about DDS's fees?
Just a few notes on the DDS fees. One of the items is, currently, there's a, for certificates of occupancy, there's a two hundred dollar fee for those, even if you're just moving from one location to the other inside the same building. And so, we would exempt businesses from having to pay a certificate of occupancy fee for those types of minor changes, so that's actually a reduction in fees. There is a fee scheduled to be able to handle credit cards. The fee for an appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals would go from three hundred dollars to five hundred dollars, and that's listed in the table. I think those are some of the major ones that I would note, and be happy to answer any questions on those.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Applaud the waving of the fee for the block parties. And on the sidewalk cafes, there's, you know, there's just not many things where I say, you know what, I'm just not going to go for that, but this is one of those, I think. To me, it's something that we want to encourage, we need more of. I guess I can understand the first time that, you know, somebody's putting in a sidewalk cafe, maybe we charge them a fee to send somebody out there and make sure that they're complying. Two hundred dollars seems a little bit much to me, but I just, I don't see any justification for an annual hundred dollar extra for a windshield survey to make sure that, you know, they're still operating a sidewalk cafe. I just, at a time when we're trying to encourage local businesses, and, you know, we're hitting them with some of these other stormwater fees and such, to me, that's just a nuisance akin to the block party fee. And I don't really care what other jurisdictions do, because if they charge more, this is just an area that I think we need to encourage, and I'm not in favor of any financial disincentive on that account.
Mr. Cal?
How much weighting did you give to what other jurisdictions are doing? I mean, in the numbers that you put in here, was it keyed off of other jurisdictions, or is this a number that you felt would be more appropriate for us? I'm just curious what the term of reference, what the reference point was.
You know, we, we based our, we went through a extensive process several years ago about right-of-way, all of our fees, and weighed them out. In this, in this instance, mostly what we were comparing to were the site plan fees. We somewhat guessed that that'd be where the most of the discussion was, and right now, off the top of my head, I don't know how our right-of-way fees compare to others or our sidewalk cafe, but I can certainly provide that information on those. Our issue in engineering is not the fees. We built our budget without any increase in these fees. What we've done is, we need a sidewalk cafe right-of-way permit to make sure that we're complying with ADA, that we are, that everything is insured, and the city's not out in any liability. That's really, our big effort is not necessarily the money, but the actual permitting of that.
Mr. Cal?
Building off of Phil Duncan's question or his view, is there a differentiation by the number of tables? We have some big businesses that, you know, probably would be absolutely indifferent to a hundred dollars, and then there may be businesses that only have, like, three or four tables, where it could make a big difference. Is there any differentiation between that type of cafe? Would that make sense?
As drafted, there is no differentiation between, on the size or the number of tables or things like that. One thing that we have, I just want to reassure that the city council, that our approach on the sidewalk cafes is, from engineering to planning, throughout the city, is pro sidewalk cafe. It's great for the life of the city. It sends, it's good, but it does need to be regulated, and we do need to be mindful of the fact that there's a commercial use on publicly owned property. There are many jurisdictions that charge rent for that. We don't, and we would not, we're not proposing that that, that there be rent charged, but we are proposing here something that is new, which is the, a more formal application process with a fee associated with it. But we'll take the council's direction as to what that fee is. It's, right, we believe it's commensurate with the level of effort.
Mr. Cal?
Personally, this is, if you had a minimum, say, you know, if it's under, just to pick a number, five tables, you know, you waive the fee, but, you know, for over, then you pay the fee. Something like, so the really small business owner has a small number of tables, I just picked that number, it could be anything, and it, it would be a subsidy from the bigger ones to the larger, but there are others that, right next to my house, where they do a lot of business, the outside cafe, and I can't imagine, that's probably not even one-tenth of the tip money that takes place on the outside of the restaurant. So, maybe there could be some adjustment for size.
Barry?
Yeah, I have a series of questions and comments. I presume that, I want to place this whole conversation in context, that these fees, the adjustment of these fees is simply intended to make the city whole. This is not a revenue generating endeavor, right? This is just, I'm seeing nods, that that's what this is, is to finally make the city whole. Remarkably, once again. Remarkably, once again, I find myself aligned with Mr. Duncan, which is, again, I think this is two-for-two here, it's kind of scary. And Mr. Kalin, I think that the sidewalk cafe fee seems, you know, seems onerous. I mean, $100 doesn't seem like a heck of a lot of money, but again, I'm trying to figure out, you know, why we would do such a thing, whether it's, you know, as Mr. Kalin suggests, you know, under five tables, it's X, and over five tables, you're absolutely right. It's indifferent. $100 doesn't mean anything to a bigger organization. So I'm just, I, you know, I appreciate the need to, you know, to place the cafe in a framework, the sidewalks in a framework, and understand that they are, you know, continue to be ADA compliant, et cetera, but it just seemed, it just seemed sort of a nuisance more than anything else, but I just raised that. I was interested in both the tree preservation fee and the BZA appeal fee. The tree preservation fee is, is what? That you, what is a repeated tree violation?
There's a lot of those. They happen during construction, and a lot of times, we'll have gone through great pains during the site planning process to say, these are the trees that are going to stay alive on your property throughout the project. We define where the critical zones are, root zone areas, and we go out and we painfully have a meeting at the beginning of a project and stake out all of these trees and put fences over them. And there are oftentimes where we are on another site doing good work, and that contractor rides right over the top of it with their track hoe, or whatever it is. That's a tree violation. There are other violations, but that's one of the more typical ones.
Okay, all right. So do you simply find them, or do you make, you find them and make them build another tree and, or, you know, plant another tree and maintain the tree?
Through great care, our arborist will go out and figure out what remedial efforts need to be undertaken. And some of that is, the tree needs to come down and start over. Some of that is that there are soil amendments and aeration and all manner of things that I couldn't speak to, that the owner will then have to undertake to repair that tree.
I'm sorry, I just finished my BZA, and then, please, the BZA, that was my last question.
The BZA appeals?
Yep.
That is, with an appeal, there's an advertisement requirement, and I think just with the, with the costs associated with processing those appeals, that's generally closer to our costs than the current fee.
Okay, fine.
And I would just note, on the, in terms of cost recovery, we don't have those numbers in our staff report. We do not, we have not achieved, and building permits specifically is where we wanted to be closest to cost recovery, and we're still pretty far away from that. And the engineering and right-of-way use fees, we're not really all that close to cost recovery. I mean, we're well below 50%. So we last did those calculations, I think, years ago, and I don't think we've updated that. But I just wanted the Council to be aware of the fact that this, neither of these cover the costs.
Mr. Cal?
On the tree preservation violations, I know you used to have performance bonds, in which if the roots were damaged and the deal was that that tree was to survive, there was...
$5,000?
Five, yeah, it was a substantial amount of money. Wouldn't that, you still have that, I trust?
We absolutely have that. It takes several tools. These trees are in the middle of big construction sites, and it is, those bonds are in effect for, I think, a year after the project is complete, before we release those, to make sure that that tree has survived. And oftentimes, when a tree has been violated, and we issue this fee, we bond that tree for even longer, because we're not sure it's going to, we're not really confident in its survival. So we say, well, we're not going to release your bond at the end of 12 months, we're going to hold it for 24 or 36, just because of ensuring that that tree that was meant to survive does survive.
Mr. Kalin?
Bill, I mean, I know a fact that, because it was right behind my house, there was a bond, it was a 10-year bond, 10-year, and it failed, the tree died. City arborist came out and said, this is dying because of the, whatever damage was done. And the bond was used to pay for the extraction of the tree.
And that's absolutely what could happen if the contractor walked away from the job. Our job is not to clean up after these contractors. Those bonds are in place essentially so we don't have to. But if, what should happen when a contractor has damaged a tree, and it's, you know, it eventually has to come down, then, and the contractor is gone, that bond is still in place to pay for the costs that we incur. And a lot of these trees that are being preserved are big trees that we can't handle in-house, and we have to sub that out. So that's dollars out of our budgets that need to pay for that. So that's what that bond money is for.
But just for three years, this was much longer.
I can't really speak to a 10-year, certainly it was negotiated on a case-by-case basis. Our typical, in the code...
I think that one was a special negotiation, because it was associated with a major redevelopment. And those are some high-profile trees, if I recall.
Used to be high-profile.
They used to be high-profile trees, yeah.
All right. Sperry, did you have any?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Pressman Snyder?
Thank you. There's some pretty hefty fee increases going from $300 to $500, a lot of Seabird-related fees, and my understanding is homeowners can be, have to go through that process, that isn't just commercial. Certainly, all the increases in penalties, I would agree with. But I've got some questions about who we're really hitting with these. I'm going to ask the Commissioner of Revenue, maybe not tonight, but to give us his, maybe impressions on the, because they pay the fees to his office, what, maybe there's some sensitivities in here in particular that we need to take a look at. But, you know, one way or another, this is just adding costs, and they're going to be passed on to the ultimate consumers after we've raised their costs elsewhere. And my question is, do we need to do this beyond the penalties, which I agree with?
Well, if we're, just with respect to the Seabird, that fee's not changing. We do have a fee for a resubmital of a request for a Seabird review, which is intended to address, you know, a situation where we can have an application that comes in, and then it's not pursued. And so we do the entire staff review of it, and then it languishes for a year, or sometimes five years. And so we have a lower fee, so that if you want to come in and restart that process, and we'll have to do all of our review again de novo, that there's a cost recovery mechanism for that. So that's what's proposed here for the resubmital request for Seabird.
So that's the only Seabird fee increase?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Let me go to the BZA appeal. We're raising that from $300 to $500. That might apply to homeowners as well as commercial? So we're sort of penalizing people for appealing? Is that what we're doing?
Well, it's not intended to be a penalty. It is intended to better capture our costs. The, you know, typically, the appeals would be from a developer, or from someone who is trying to put an addition on their house, or can do some new development in the city, and has a determination that they disagree with. That's the most typical case. But we also do have appeals from third parties who are concerned about a development that's happening on their neighbor's property, what have you. And in either case, that's what the appeal fee would be for.
Okay, so that could hit individual homeowners?
Yeah.
And the right-of-way fees, are they, I certainly agree now with at least three other council members who talked about the sidewalk cafe fees not being a particularly good idea. So who, what right-of-way inspection?
Specifically to the sidewalk cafes, or any of the other?
No, right-of-way inspection generally. Is that all commercial, or what?
So right-of-way permits are issued for any work that's done in the right-of-way. So you've got utilities who do work in the right-of-way, and sometimes that's just a one-time thing, so they wouldn't come in under that major permit. But you've got a homeowner who's going to put a new driveway in, or a new sanitary sewer connection or otherwise, or you've got commercial developments that are putting a new driveway access in. All of those come in, they require our review, and we issue a permit for that. This raises those fees.
So we're doubling?
So what it does is it, the standard permit remains the same, I believe, and, no, I'm sorry, it goes up to $200. But we leave the simple permits at lane closures at $100.
So the homeowner that's doing some work and wants you to determine where your right-of-way is, you're going to charge them how much for that?
So we're going to charge them $200 for that.
Is that the current fee?
The current fee is $100.
So we're doubling that?
I think the current fee is $200.
I think the current fee was $200, but I apologize. I believe the current fee is $200, but I can't promise that with 100% certainty.
It doesn't look like it's changed.
Yeah, so I had some questions there. And then we charge, we're raising the fee, we're doubling the fee for work in progress without a permit, okay?
Yes, let me go back, I found it in the staff report. The right-of-way fee does not increase. The standard permit today is $200, and that's what it will be going forward.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you moved on to the right-of-way, working in the right-of-way without a permit?
Yeah, I got that. And tree contractors were raising their fee, going up to $100 for them, right?
It is. It's a fair bit of process for us to review all the items. That fee has been standard at $25 since its inception, and I believe it was instated in 1980s.
Okay. All right, well, I may have more questions, but thank you for answering the ones I have.
Councilmember Turner?
I share some of the concerns that some of my colleagues have made. One, I think there should be no fee for the sidewalk cafe irrespective of the size. I mean, I think we ought to be encouraging and frankly paying people to put sidewalks, cafes out there, because it really enlivenes our street scape, generates revenue for the city, and I think just makes it, our downtown, a better place to be. So I would suggest that maybe we could do away with that fee. I also have some concerns about some of these fee increases that relate to access to government, or even due process. For example, others have mentioned the BZA appeal. I would agree with that as well. I know that the fee is not necessarily out of whack with some of our neighbors. I was just looking on the internet, I think Fairfax charges $600, I think Arlington $608, something like that, for a BZA appeal. But I've got to say, it's kind of like going to court. You know, you can go to court, and the court costs, I think, are less than $100. I'm sure there's a subsidy for that, but it's still, it's kind of the right to have access to your government, and to participate, and to have, you know, take issue with determinations. And so I have an issue with raising the BZA appeal number to $500 as well from the $300. I mean, even thanks as well for getting into zoning determination, it's $1,000, essentially to have the zoning administrator opine, you know, to what his position is on something, which I think is quite a lot as well. And I guess just in general, I have concerns about restricting access to government, or getting information from government, or having the right to have your day in court, quote-unquote, for example, like appeals and the like, because it discourages people. You can be right as rain, somebody makes a decision in government that's wrong, but you don't have $500 to pay to go duke it out. And so you just sort of take it, you hold your nose and you take it. And so I think we ought to be very concerned about raising some of those fees too much. I guess there's a question I'd ask, is anybody from kind of the business side of things waiting on these, the chamber, have you guys, has anybody seen these yet, or considered them, or have any thoughts from anybody, feedback from the business side of the world?
No.
Okay. Is this due to be, is that what that was for? Okay. I mean, I think...
I think some input now.
I've deliberately not been looking at Gary. There was an email from the Executive Director of the Chamber about a couple of these things that circulated today to somebody, to me, or some, I know I picked it up somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, I would encourage, I guess, to try to get a little, maybe a little more input than we've gotten today. But I think in general, those are my comments. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Kalin?
I like the access to government idea. Actually, though, we're not covering our costs. Everything that we do is a subsidy now. Now, if we're going to talk about subsidies, now we're in a world where there's a lot of other discussion, there are a lot of activities that people, we've been reluctant to subsidize. If we're not covering our costs, this all flows back to the tax rate. Now, some of us have been concerned about it, others say they're concerned about it, but this ends up, we're a closed financial system. You lower the costs, or you don't raise them properly, someone else has to make them up. If the issue is, you might be, yes, there may be people who don't have, but I, it's hard to imagine that they're in a situation, if they're that strapped for cash, that they're going to the BZA for some sort of variance, or whatever, you know, whatever it is. I believe in user fees, and if we're not covering our costs, someone else, I don't want my tax rate to go up to cover costs for uses or issues that I don't benefit as a rule. There are others that are the obligation of the state, police, schools, et cetera, et cetera. But if these are specifically user fees, I do not agree with the subsidy. And I don't agree that the cafes should be a bond. I just think that for the small cafes, if we wanted to do the livening up, the street scape, et cetera, that makes sense. But there, the larger restaurants can afford the $100.
Can I respond?
Yeah, can I, let me weigh in, and then I'll turn it loose to you all. So on the sidewalk cafes, I just want to point a clarification on this. There's currently no process in place for that, right? Like, you don't, if you want a sidewalk cafe, you don't need a permit?
They're, right. We have developed, we have a draft that we're working through.
So the status quo is, we don't need one? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. You don't need one? Okay, so it's not about $100. It's about going through the process. I mean, I'm more concerned about that than $100. I don't, Mr. Kalin, I respect your point, Mr. Duncan, I respect your point, it's not about money. I think it's more about, do we want our business owners to go through a process of seeking a permit to do a sidewalk cafe, not whether they're having to pay $100 or $200? So I think the disincentive is going through the process of seeking a permit, more than coughing up the $100. So I think that's really the public policy question that I would posit to Council, do we want to have a permit process for that? It sounds like there may be some ADA issues of why it might be a good idea. So perhaps having a better understanding of why we would ever, since we're trying to create more sidewalk cafes, why we would want a permit process before we get to the fees, maybe a better way of approaching it?
Well, I would make a case that it, there needs to be a process, because it is a private use of public property. And there are insurance issues, there are ADA requirements, there are some minimum standards that ought to be upheld with that use. And so I would argue in favor of the process. The fee, I think, you know, particularly as we're trying to engage with the business community on the process, maybe the fee gets in the way of that, and we should try to make sure that doesn't get in the way. So I would certainly be open, I would argue for the process, and the fee could be, could be zero. I think that would be my two cents.
Let's do that.
Or at least, why don't we engage our business community through the chamber about that? Because I know that, you know, again, we all, as Mr. Kalin suggested, we all hear feedback through a variety of mechanisms. And right now, there's been a lot of interest in businesses trying to expand, whether it's rooftop decks or sidewalk cafes, and I know we've had a couple hiccups on that front already. So it could be good for us... So, it could be good for us to engage in our business community rather than just putting in a, a fee or a process without sort of getting their feedback or at least explaining why we think having a process is as important. Certainly, city liability on a right of way makes sense. And I take it with the sidewalk cafes, this would not cover situations like the Spectrum Plaza?
Well, the Spectrum is unique in that they own that area where most of their cafe activity is happening. Now, when they go, they, they do have permission to go out on the Broad Street sidewalks as well. That part of it would be covered under this, the other part would not, I believe.
Exactly right. And then two things, I'll just mention, they're sort of loosely related to, to fees. But again, very loosely, so I would sort of want this parking lauded. But again, this goes to the notion of, you know, as we're talking to various folks in the community, two things recently that have come to my attention is that apparently we, our, our permits aren't kept on microfiche. They're destroyed after not so many years. I think it's just a few years and then they're sort of destroyed or are not available. Is that right?
Yeah, I, I don't know the date at which they're destroyed, but-
Can we, can we, can I just request if that's an easy find, that, that we get council an update? The, the way that this is coming up is we're starting to see, you know, again, it's that time of year where we're seeing a lot of homes being sold in the city, et cetera. And it's been brought to my attention as people are trying to do their, their due diligence and trying to find out if some improvements that have been made to a home or a lot, whether proper permits were pulled, nobody can find out. So, apparently the permits are not available. So, if we're trying to look at our fee schedule, that's something that we might want to look at about, do we want to up our permitting fees to capture microfishing or preserving them? Because as people are trying to do their due diligence, there's no way they're able to find out whether it was a, if the work was done right. Similar point, the way this came up to my attention was that there's still an apparent disconnect. But I'm assuming that this disconnect has been kind of captured, which gets to my other point, which is some, some of our tax assessments aren't capturing improvements that have been made. And I think at this point, their assessor's office and the permit counter office have a link to each other somehow. Is that right, Mr. Shields? Which kind of raises the concern that, yes, it might have been people not getting the permits that they needed to, so that it's not captured. And that may be something that homeowners or prospective buyers would want to know. So, that could build in an incentive if people know, you know, if you ever tried to sell your house, the next buyer's going to know whether you pulled the permits or not and it's going to make it harder for you to bid your house. You've got to get the permits that you're required to get. So, just point that out as something that we might want to figure into this cost structure. And again, as far as user fees goes, my, my, my view about it is on the, there's user fees, such as building permits, site plan approvals, that I think we should actually look at again to try to capture 100% of those costs. And that would go to site plan permits, all of that. I think that's all fair game for capturing 100% of the user fees. When it comes to issues like access to government, like courts and BZA appeals, I have a slightly different approach and I do think some subsidies there are just the cost of doing business. So, I, I wouldn't be looking at capturing every single penny there. Something fair that doesn't create disincentives to people filing appeals that have some merit to them. But at the same time, you don't want to make it zero because then you get frivolous appeals, but some balance there I think is important. But subsidizing those to some level so people do have access in a meaningful way, I think is part of living in a democratic society versus other types of appeals. Or I'm sorry, other types of fees. Mr. Kalin?
Well, we don't know that these increases would in any way hinder access. You're just making an assumption that people are very sensitive to, to that. Maybe it's true, but we don't have any data that suggests that that's the case. So, that's, that's really just, you know, an intuitive view. Maybe it's right, maybe it's not.
And I was, I wasn't positing on that. I was suggesting just where I'm at philosophically on that point.
I mean, I would say, someone who does some of this for a living, that actually, I mean, this is anecdotal, but I can absolutely tell you when people come in and they say, you know what? It's going to cost me $600 to peel this issue about where I can put my, you know, mailbox or whatever it is. They're going to say, you know, it's not worth it. And you may say, who cares? But I mean, to me, I think it does matter. I think, I agree with what Nader's just said, that I think it is part of running a democracy where people have access to, I mean, for example, if you wanted to go to court, it'd cost you less than 100 bucks to go to court. Yet at the same time, we're talking about making it five times more expensive to peel a decision of somebody in city government that may or may not be correct. You just won't have your day in court because it costs so much money to go through the process. That's just, it's a philosophical thing. Maybe it's because we're lawyers, because that's fundamental to our profession. But to me, it does matter. And you're talking about BZA appeals over the course of the year, you're probably talking about two grand in revenue. You know, maybe there's 10 or 12, I don't know how many BZA appeals get filed a year, but I'm guessing it's not 50 in this city. So, we're talking about a grand total of a couple thousand dollars. And I suspect, we haven't heard that information, but I'd like to know what the proposed fiscal impact of all this is, because I'm guessing it's probably tens of thousands of dollars in increased revenue, if not more, from these fees. And so, to my mind, a couple grand to have access to your, to your government i- is important to me. But I would also like to know what the proposed fiscal impact of all these fees are, if in fact it's known or can be known.
And again, I mean, to this point, Mr. Kalin, I, I take your point that it's going to, somebody pays and there may be a way that we still make sure that, you know, the access point is subsidized, but it's subsidized by the folks who are coming in to do the change of the site plan or the thing that could get appealed and they're actually subsidizing it. So, I mean-
If you can fine tune it, that, that's, that's great.
So, there's a way of capturing it on the other side of the transaction and still giving people access. Because I do agree that with Mr. Tarter in the sense that, you know, it's, when you start getting in the $500 range, it starts getting, you know, questionable for the average Joe of whether it's something that they're going to appeal.
Could I just, oh, sorry.
Mr. Duncan and then Ms. Barry?
It's getting late, so if we're going to talk about this a little bit longer, I mean, in the future, could I just ask a question about dumpsters? I understand that line 133, we're talking, I guess, about, you know, construction pods or dumpster temporary things. But I would like to understand better what our fee and penalty structure is, if we have one, for commercial dumpsters behind shopping centers and other areas as we do more of the kind of development that the mayor was talking about earlier and even, you know, maybe even especially existing businesses. I feel like there are some places around town where there are an inordinate number of dumpsters. Maybe if we charged more for each one, there'd be fewer of them somehow. I mean, I guess I would like some more information about what we might do through fees that would address both the proliferation and the condition of some of the commercial dumpster situations we have around town.
The, this, this is really about dumpsters in the right of way. This is commercial dumpsters. And I'm, I'm not prepared to go into any detail about what that fee structure is, but I can tell you that every time we get a complaint, we respond. Our solid waste coordinator, Allison Lorenz, is on the ball with it and she does work very hard on a one-on-one basis. And the rules for, for all of those commercial dumpsters are found in the solid waste code. And we're, we're bound by that code as we move forward with any disciplinary action. She spends a great deal of her time trying to rectify these issues.
Ms. Barry?
Yes, I just wanted to, I see we do have a philosophical debate going on, which is, which is healthy and, and interesting and I hope we can, we can resolve it. But to Mr. Tarter's point about looking at revenue, I started my comments by assuming that this was not intended to be a revenue generating endeavor. This was intended to make the city closer to whole. So, if there is a revenue number associated with this in, in response to Mr. Tarter, I'd like to see it as a net, because I'd like to see, in fact, what the expense is, because I think that's what this is all about. What you are trying to do is dig out a, dig out from a hole that the city is experiencing. So, so yes to Mr. Tarter's request, but I would like to then see the expense side as well. So, because I, I think what we're going to see is just you net out a little better, but not, it still does not make the city whole is what I'm hearing.
Other councilmembers?
And it's late.
Yeah, it is late. And as far as calendaring this, I'd try to capture at least where there, there's issues that need work. One is on the sidewalk cafe issue. Two is sort of the BZA philosophical issue and access to government.
Access to government.
Uh, uh, access to government, because there may be other fees that are associated with that. And there may be a way of getting to net neutral on it by increasing fees elsewhere to essentially subsidize the access to government and still get us there. And then process-wise, working with the business community before these come back to the council.
Okay. The first two, we probably could resolve right here tonight. The, the last one, working with the business community, we would need some time to do that. Do we want to go ahead and, just for those two, get consensus as to where council sets those rates? I don't think it warrants a whole lot of analysis because it's not, it's not a fiscal issue. It's a philosophical issue. And so, I don't think there's any analysis that will help the council's decision on either of those.
I mean, I, I'm happy to weigh in on, on the sidewalk issue. I'd be more interested to just see if the business community would be supportive of a process and just eliminate the fees, but I'm not even sure that they would be supportive of a process.
It's just very unusual that there's not a process. It's, that's an aberration. You know, when, when you use someone else's property for a commercial use, you need to get their permission. I mean, that's just sort of-
Yeah, I mean, if, I mean, if staff feels strongly about it, um, fine, but it's got to be smooth. Like, you know, let's just make it easy for the business community not add more burden.
There's also some disputes that can happen between businesses. And I think a clear set of rules of the road and everybody says, okay, we get it and that's good for everybody. I, I think there, there can be a win out of this.
I mean, if I could just weigh in for a second, it's common for this to be regulated. I mean, for the reasons they've articulated, you also don't want your right of way where people are walking restrict, constricted so much because someone wants to spill out. You have ABC issues, for example, someone selling alcohol out in that area. You know, some people in other communities have sort of staked it out as this is mine now. You know, they drilled holes in the sidewalk and they put up, you know, kind of a permanent fence in the sidewalk. And so, I think it's absolutely appropriate to have some kind of restriction, but I'd make it easy as you can and, and I would weigh in as free as well.
Is there a consensus around a $0 fee for the sidewalks?
Mr. Kalin, I think Mr. Kalin's proposal was based on seating. On seating, number of seats.
Yeah, but I, I'm not going to, you know, fight on. If you want to give, that, okay. This isn't about the, the amount of money for that. It was more of an equity issue. And at the risk actually of agreeing with Dave, you know, that, yeah, this is, you know, two, two for Duncan, one for Tarter. This is, you know, we're going for an indoor record here. Yeah, I, I, there has to be some process and it's not, you know, you, you can't ask the people who are the most, how can I describe it? The views are interesting, but it's hard to imagine that they would say, yeah. Yeah, I'd love to have a process.
Regulate me?
Yeah, regulate. I mean, what do you expect them to say? The issue is what makes sense for the city. And I think the, the rationale provided by the city manager is very solid. It just, it really, it has, there has to be some form. You don't want the process to be cumbersome and dissuade people, but there's got to be some rules of the game, some regulations on it, like it or not.
Fair enough, as long as it's not cumbersome. All right. So, it sounds like we've got agreement on the sidewalk issue. On the BZA issue, what, what I post, you know, put out there is the notion that we would increase fees elsewhere to make it neutral, but try to keep the BZA and other access fees where they currently are. Ms. Barry?
You know, I, I, I think Mr. Tarter's point is a, is a powerful philosophical one. You know, access to government, you know, should not be abridged. But the people who, but frankly, the people who are appealing BZA, you know, rulings are people who have, probably have the means to do such. So, it would be disingenuous for us to assume that this is, you know, a little old lady, you know, living on social security who's, you know, who's scraping together her last dime to do it, you know, to, to have access to city government. You know, I just put that out there. I just, I, I, I think that, that, that it is, you know, again, the overarching access to, to government argument is, is powerful. But I think practically, realistically, the people who are engaged in, in the debate with the BZA could, could and would spend this kind of money to get where they need, they need to be. So, I, I guess I would like to at least keep some kind of fee structure on the, on the table. I think it would be, again, I think it would be sort of disingenuous for us to, to waive that fee entirely because those who stand to benefit from it would be benefiting significantly at the, at the city's behest. Because as Mr. Kalin points out, this is real time and this is real money and this is costing city staff and resources. So, I would just make a, you know, perhaps the lone argument for reconsidering some kind of a fee.
But I don't, I don't think the proposal is doing away, away with fees, increasing it.
But you, I thought you said increasing it from some other place.
No. What I, what I was suggesting is rather-
Keeping it at 300.
Keeping it at 300, but if, if the cost, if we're proposing to increase it to 500 from 300, finding $200 to add somewhere from some other fee structure, such as site plan or some permits.
Okay.
To offset it.
Got it.
But not to make it zero.
Okay, great, fine. Sorry. Thanks.
I, I have a comment as well. Just to broaden it out, I would ask just that you guys take a look at not just the BZA appeal, but the fees that have gone up. Some of them appear to have gone up substantially for people to get information from government. For example, to get a determination from a zoning administrator or to get some kind of, you know, compliance letter, things like that, to just make the, makes, make it so they, I think, remain reasonable. Because when they become unreasonable, then again, people don't really have access to their government. They don't know, they don't have information because it's so expensive to get information. $1,000 to get the zoning administrator to tell you, you know, what your rights are in the city or what the zoning category allows. I just think that we ought to consider that as sort of part, not just the BZA, but ask you to take a look at some of the increases in fees associated with giving citizens, business or residents information from the government. Why are you shaking your head, Ira?
Sorry to extend this, but your, your point's taken in isolation, you know, okay. But I don't understand, generally speaking, you have been very concerned about the tax rate. Really wanted to keep it at 127. You changed your mind at the end, okay. But this, but you can't have everything. You can't, if you want to cut city services-
Ira, if you, we're talking about probably $20,000 a year. You know, so you may say that I'm not allowed to ever ask that we not cut something in one area or the other, but in the grand scheme of things, the amount of money we're talking about, the BZA appeals, how many are there a year on average? 20 in this city?
Well, you were talking about the broader issue, David. That's what I'm talking about.
What I'm telling you, zoning compliance letters, there's probably about 20 a year of those two. We're not talking about, the vast majority of the fees you're going to see in this are from site plans, from the application we just heard two weeks ago. Those will generate hundreds of thousands of dollar fees. The fees I'm talking about, you're talking about the grand scheme of a whole year will be $10,000. We're talking chump change in the grand scheme of the city budget. Yet the idea of having access to your government, to be able to get information from your government, have a right to have due process in government, to me, has a lot of value. And so, I'm willing to spend a little bit of extra money, subsidize those areas of, of, of our business to allow for those things. And maybe another thing, as Nader said, we increase it just a slight bit to allow for it. But I think in the grand scheme of things, we're talking about trivial amount of money in the, in the grand scheme of government.
Not arguing with the, the actual, I'm, I'm-
Before we go too far, Mr. Snyder, did you have something you wanted to add?
We're really, we're trying to recover costs where we saw, saw them. In terms of the determination, there'd been, we really didn't have a fee. And for example, the determination on the front yard setback off Paper Streets that came up, that was, you know, where a commercial builder asked for a determination. We're trying to have something like that not be less than the cost to get a variance, which is another option, for example. So, there was an effort to have a fee for that kind of determination, a commercial type determination. It would be consistent with the effort involved and then we also wanted to make those transparent, put those on the website, route them through city staff, including city attorney. So, that was the basis for that, that particular fee.
I, I disagree with that. I just think they ought to not be as much as is being proposed in some instances because I think that it is important for people to have information without having to pay an arm and a leg to know what the rights are under our government.
So, we're trying to have these, you know, reflect the cost or time involved or estimate what the time might be. But- But, you know, it's up to councils to what that actual number is. But in that instance, it was one where we said we were going to, we're going to establish a fee for that kind of a thing where it might be interpreting what the ordinance says, put it out there for people. So it could be looked at and vetted very transparently. A lot of that work has been going on, it just hasn't been out there.
All right. So why, why don't we sort of, let me, let me propose, it sounds like we're going circle around. On the BZA, on the BZA issue, it sounds like one, one approach where I think there's council consensus is keep the fee as its current rate. But find other offsets somewhere else in increasing the fees slightly to, to make up for the lost, quote unquote, lost revenue that wouldn't happen. Or if that can't be done, then just keep it at the current rate. So we have the, there's not issues about sort of access to government. Then there's Mr. Tarter's larger point about access to government, getting determinations. I don't think we tonight are going to be able to address all those issues because that, that is so many a variety of fees. But I, I do, I, I am sympathetic to Mr. Tarter's point about making sure that people do get determinations from their government at, at reasonable cost. So what that reasonable is, I think, is what we're trying to figure out. I don't think we'll have time tonight to, to sort that out. But I do think it's, it's an important point.
I have to.
Mr. Kalen?
No one is arguing that there is not a need for access to government. I don't, just don't know why the difference between three to five, on what basis is that? That's just a feeling and that's hard for me to deal with. If the technical people make a recommendation, I don't like to argue on my feelings unless there's an analytical basis. And these small changes add up. You take many different types of subsidies and you start to add them up and it adds up to a few cents on the tax rate. And not arguing this, that this is small. Individually, they're small, I agree.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're going to get the consensus on the point about sort of the other fees. So perhaps we can just table those items and then bring them back at a future, or bring it to a future work session. I don't, I don't think those fees are in this.
Look, I don't know what the exact number should be, but when things go from like zero to $1,000, it concerns me. Because I, it's a big increase for certain things. And so, you know, I, I don't know what the right fee is for this. And I, and I could tell you that some of these fees, they've gone up a lot, but they're not necessarily out of whack with our neighbors. But it doesn't mean we have to charge what our neighbors charge for everything. And so I would just like us to examine and consider some of those things. And to me, again, the access to information, the access to government is important. And I think it's a very, very tiny amount of what we're talking about. If, if we want, if we really want to discuss this, let's find out how many BZA appeals were filed last year. But I think you probably, it's less than five grand we're talking about in terms of the number. And so I know, but you keep arguing it though. You say you don't care about it, but then you keep making the point over. And so to me, it is a trivial amount of money, but it's not trivial to the person who's got the appeal they want to file. And you may say, well, everybody who files appeals, the only ones I ever hear about are the neighbors who are complaining about the new lot that just created, got created from substandard lot. And those are the ones you hear about.
All right.
But there are other ones you don't hear about.
Let's just try to figure out what those items are. Which ones, uh?
I mean, look, I, just basically in general, I would just say things that require the government to determine things or to give information.
But, but on, on what's being proposed?
Such as zoning determination official.
Can you, can you give us a line and page number?
Uh, it doesn't have a line.
Page number?
Looks like it's three, I'd estimate it's like 370, something like that.
It's on page 12?
Yeah, 12 of 16. There's things like zoning determination, $1,000. And apparently, right now, is there a fee for that now?
There hasn't been. We, we're trying to avoid it being in the same to get a determination as opposed to apply for another approach, which would be a variance where you could take your case and have it heard that way.
I mean, determination would just be, if I ask a question of the zoning administrator, can I do X, Y, and Z? I want a formal determination, like a piece of writing in return, in response, saying X, Y, and Z are your rights. That would be what I'd be paying for, $1,000.
This, this was in contemplating something which was more involved with interpretations of the code and things like that.
But even so, does R1A allow me to do X, Y, and Z? I mean, that's an interpretation of the code. Would that be something that?
That's a zoning compliance.
Yeah.
No, no, that's only, compliance would be if you're asking about your particular property. And so these are the kind of things, look, I don't want to belabor all this, but I just want to say we're going from zero to $1,000 for somebody asking a question and trying to get something in writing that they can rely on. And it just seems like a pretty steep increase to me. And I would just ask that we consider some of these things. If I'm the only person here that thinks that, then so be it, it's done. If anybody, you know, I don't know anybody, what else, anybody else thinks. But I do, as someone who does this for a living somewhat, and I'm involved in these kind of things, it does impact people's willingness to go ask the question. If I got to pay $1,000 to get an answer, I'm less likely to ask that question.
And, and our approach was fairly simple. We were just trying to identify places where we thought we were low and trying to estimate what we thought the cost might be. But if council wants to, you know, fine tune these numbers, that's why we're here.
And I actually didn't see that in the staff report, that's why. I think I might have missed it on the first reading because it shows up in the back, so.
There are, there are a couple of issues though where we had some predatory things going on that we.
Why don't, why don't we take this approach? So it sounds like on the sidewalk cafes and the BZA issues, we've got consensus. There's some items that weren't, seem to have not been captured in the staff report that deal with, let's just put the box around it called access to government and getting determinations. I think Mr. Tarter did highlight the BZA, or I'm sorry, the zoning administrators determination going from zero to 1,000, which is.
Significant.
Significant expense. And it sounds like there's unclarity of what we're talking about, just listening to the discussion of what would fall within the category of a determination and what wouldn't. So if Mr. Tarter, who does this, is confused, so is the average Joe. So I think we might not need, we may need some clarity on, on the points where it's access. But I think the other fees, there seems to be consensus around. Is that fair? Vice Mayor Snyder?
I just want to go back to actually a question another council member asked, which wasn't answered, which is, what is your assumption about the additional revenues you're going to get? And recall that your city budget, which you submitted to us, was basically approved. Did that budget assume fee increases of this kind? Or is this over and above additional revenue? If so, we ought to think about an offset.
I don't think that it has a, as was stated earlier, this, there's not a real significant fiscal impact from these fees altogether. And so we can try to calculate that, what it was last year and compare that to what it would be here. But it was not really a budget driven issue, it was more driven on, on process improvements and things like that.
And I think the council in the past had talked about on some of the development and site plan issues, trying to capture the cost to the extent possible. So it's certainly consistent with the direction that we'd given before. But it sounds like there might have been other items added that are giving us pause at this point. So, and it sounds like, you know, to the, to the extent the staff can even cali- calibrate on site plans, et cetera, where we're captioning 100% of the, the costs, I don't think, I think the council consensus around that is we should be trying to do that. It's just when we start going into some other areas like access to the government and getting your, your, your ability to be heard, that's when we start sliding into philosophical issues where council is not necessarily all on the same page on.
And I recognize the disconnect from the budget discussion. I will say on these development fees, it is a very hard thing to budget for. We'll have, for building permits, which is the source of most of the funds. And, and that's, some years that'll be $600,000 and the next year will be $200,000. And so in terms of a thing to build a budget around, it's very difficult. And these are in that universe also.
Understood. All right. I think we've done the most that we're going to get done on that. We're on the FY13 budget amendments. And before we begin this discussion, one of the items on this, it may touch on the Child Development Center. As I previously disclosed, my daughter is on the waiting list at the Child Development Center. And given that it's, could affect other families as well and is a prudential matter, I just wanted to disclose that. And I should have disclosed to, as before, I do own 243, a property 243 Gundry. And my wife is president of the Winter Hill Community Association, given that we had some discussion about some of the recent development projects.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Happy Monday.
Happy Monday.
You tired?
Yes.
Just say yes and we can go home. Okay, here it is. We're trying to increase the budget by a net amount of revenue and expenditures of $97,500. What we're doing is we're taking here to fore unrecognized revenues and allocating expenses for them. And we're also moving money from contingency to address other budget issues. All right. To be precise, we have $140,000 of reimbursement from FEMA. And we want to use that to cover DeRachio and Sandy Storms. We will need an additional $10,000 and we're proposing to take that out of contingency. We have $57,000 in motor pool revenue. And that was as a result of higher fuel prices. That is going to offset the increase in cost in the motor pool. We have $100,000 increase in revenue from wrecks and parts. These fees are due to higher attendance than we had anticipated. And certainly the cost of running those programs is what this revenue is going to offset. We have $46,500 as a reimbursement for workers comp due to an audit adjustment. We want to use that for the Huntington Avenue sidewalk. In addition, because the sidewalk is going to cost $50,000, we want to take $3,500 from contingency and use it here. There's $13,000 in insurance reimbursement for a light pole and radar sign. And again, we're going to use that money to repair those damaged properties. We looked at our rev- our bond proceeds. And since we did not do a bond issue this year and don't contemplate doing one before the end of the fiscal year, we wanted to reduce the revenues from the bond proceeds. And they were intended to pay for police cars and equipment. And that was $159,000 plus the professional fees for debt issuance. So that revenue is being reduced. Because the bond proceeds are being reduced, the debt service is also being reduced. And what we want to do with that is take the $114,000 in the reduction in debt service and apply that to the police cars and equipment of 159. That leaves us short about $45,000. We want to take $45,000 from contingent to address those costs. All right. Now, to break down contingent, there's $128,000 that we're using. $10,000 is to pay for DeRachio, $70,000 for the traffic signal, $3,500 for the sidewalk improvements, $45,000 for the police cars and computer equipment. Any questions?
Questions on that part so far?
I had a question on the police cars. So are we moving forward or we're not?
We're moving forward. We had intended to bond them. We're not, we're going to pay cash for them.
Is that consistent with good fiscal policy?
Yes.
Okay.
If we had a reserve, we would have been paying cash.
Yeah, okay. So we're moving forward then with.
Yes, sir.
With the police cars.
Yes, we are.
It's not a delay. We're not cutting.
We're not cutting, we're just funding them differently. Again, since we didn't do the bond issue, we had gone ahead and ordered the police cars anyway. And what we decided to do was to pay cash for them.
It's already done? This is a cleanup?
Yes, sir, this is a cleanup. We could still bond them.
No, but I mean, I, I think the point is people should not anticipate that there's going to be more cars out. We already have the two cars, they're already in service.
We had requested three cars in the 13 budget. We bought them. All right. The only question was how we were going to pay for them. We've elected to use the cash method as opposed to debt service.
So just because I think there may be some misunderstanding in the community that this is not removing money from the police. This is, we're funding what we committed to do.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Other questions so far? Comments? Sure.
Thank you. Just like to say, on item three of C, the $3,500 for the sidewalk room for Huntington Ave, I think that's probably a very good expenditure, even if it, even if you need a little bit more. Given that the building, the CDC will take place and we're going to have a lot of kids down there. It should be safe and it should be as well designed and user friendly as we can possibly do. So I wanted to just highlight that as something that I thought made a lot of sense. Thank you.
That is going to be ADA compliant, I take it?
Yes.
And that goes with all of our new sidewalk improvements? All new construction is going to be ADA. All right, anything else?
Thank you, council.
All right, so this is.
Is that the end of the end or are we going to talk about CIP stuff?
Oh, okay.
Was that my last? If that was my last chance to ask a question, I want to ask you if it's not, I'll wait.
All right. We're requesting an amendment to the traffic signal management project due to additional funds to complete the project. We got approval from VDOT. The amount requested is $123,000. The city received insurance reimbursement for damages to the playground, so we're also fixing that.
That's on Lincoln Park, right?
That's right.
Yes. Yes, that's the C I, CIF.
Any questions there?
Now, okay, thank you. This is just sort of a larger question. And I believe this is the first time since I've been on council that we've gone through this process at this, at this scale, scope, whatever, this sort of budget amendment process, or whatever we call it here. I know other jurisdictions, as I read in the paper, do this same sort of thing. And it's called, you know, all highly commendable and understandable and, but I'm struck by the disconnect or the difference between the time that we spent handling over, you know, eight, 10, $12,000 on some of these other things we've talked about tonight and a pretty significant shifting around of monies, which nets out at, I think you said 97.5. And I guess I'm asking, as we draw close to the end of this fiscal year and get a report about, you know, revenues and so forth, are there opportunities for the council through the Budget and Finance Committee or elsewhere to bring other concerns or expenditures forward that might be included in this sort of rearranging of the chairs to make things work out administratively in a better way?
If council is prepared to entertain allocating excess revenue, I'm prepared to discuss that with you. We felt that after what we did during the budget season and the commitments that council made for the excess revenue, that we needed to leave that alone for the time being. This only dealt with excess expenditures. Now, last year, we tried to deal with the whole thing and you saw where that got us. We barely made the end of the fiscal year and it caused a lot of accounting problems for me. So we're trying to do it early. We're trying to separate those things that might be controversial. Anytime you want to discuss excess revenue, I'm here.
So the kind of things that you're talking about here, excess.
Their reallocation.
Reallocation of existing expenditures, basically.
Yes, reallocation of underspending.
Of underspending, right. And so if I, or anybody on council, had a suggestion to throw in to this that involved underspending in any of these areas that might be allocated to another area, is this the only chance we get to talk about that? Or is, are there other chances to? I mean, fiscal year's not over with, right? I mean, we're going to have, is, does this cover all the anticipated underspending in revenues, period?
This anticipates all the underspending that can be reallocated on the expenditure side. You have until the next work session, which is June 3rd, to discuss what you may want to do with any other underspending or excess revenue that you identify or you want me to identify.
If it's going to be handled with. If it's going to be handled within this fiscal year.
If you want to spend it this fiscal year, yes, sir.
Okay, and does Budget and Finance Committee, is there a regular meeting schedule or process where this stuff gets worked through, or?
No, there isn't, but I do plan to meet with the Budget and Finance Committee to talk about the excess revenue.
Okay, you do, okay.
Yes.
And so, that would hap-
But it may not be before the end of the fiscal year, because, again, we purposely dealt with those expenditures that we felt needed to be addressed this year, we did nothing-
Okay, understood, understood.
...from the unmet needs, so, we only dealt with essentials.
Okay, and I have no-
And we left the excess revenue alone.
I'm, I'm fine with all these, and so, I think the question that I had was just answered, so, when the Budget and Finance Committee meets to talk about the next thing it talks about, we'll, obviously, all know about that, and that'll be the chance to come and listen.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Just a quick question, what do we know about excess revenue?
We've identified a pretty good range, and it's pretty solid at this point, it's 2.6 million, I believe.
2.6 million?
Yes, sir.
Not budgeted?
Excess revenue, yes, revenue in excess of what was budgeted.
For which fiscal year?
FY13, the current fiscal year.
And some portion of that is because of the increase in the tax rate.
Some portion of that is due to the increase in the tax rate?
Because of the calendar year, let's just make sure we get that out there.
Okay, yes.
Portion of it's due to the tax rate, approximately $900,000 from recollection.
You guys, if I can just, I don't want to end, this is a fascinating discussion, but we have a closed session that we need to be prepared for, so-
It's about $900,000, yeah.
Before we go down this road, can, I know that we're going to have a work session on the excess revenue discussion, so.
That's the question I had, so the work session, the next work session, we'll talk about this stuff in some detail, is that right, so, June the 3rd?
We'd certainly could put it on-
If you, if you would like.
It's not on the calendar, but we can-
It's not on the calendar.
Well, I would defer to my more senior members.
I think 2.6 million is significant, we ought to figure out how we're going to manage that, so we ought to talk about it.
Sir, if I may, when you adopted the budget, you spent some of it already.
That's the question that I, that I asked, which was, so then it's not excess.
But that's for FY14.
Right.
You've allocated-
Right.
-estimated excess revenue in 13 to FY14.
That's what I thought.
Yes, that's-
So, is there excess over that?
Yes.
That's going to be the question-
Yes, there is.
-that we'll be interested in, what is that, and what are the options for managing that?
All right, and would you like to do that the next work session?
All right, seems to me as relevant as anything we do.
We can potentially do it on the 3rd.
Yeah.
Or the 17th, one of the two.
Okay.
So, either I'll place it on the calendar for the 3rd or 17th.
I didn't understand where you were going on.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And again, we, we have given some direction that, in the past, that some of that should go towards capital and infrastructure, so, we have provide, it's not like we haven't had any discussion about this.
Maybe the 17th is what it's going to be.
Yeah, the 17th may actually, looking at the calendar, may be better, it's a little bit lighter right now, unless things move around, so, let's tentatively have that as the 17th, okay, all right, I don't have the closed session forums, Mr. Shios, do you have those?
Are we here?
Yeah, we, uh-
We need a car for the bike ride.
Can we do that from here, Ms., Phil, we still need you.
We need you just to-
We need you for the vote.
Okay.
Kids don't have to sit down, they, like, because we're off mic, right, or are we off mic?
No, we're still, well, no, we're still on mic.
Okay.
Okay, upon a motion made by council member-
Barry. She yells.
And seconded by council member-
Carter.
And passed by a voice vote of city council, council went into closed session pursuant to 2.2-3711A3, the Code of Virginia, for discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public business purpose, or of disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, and to section 2.2-3711A7, consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members and consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel regarding the water transaction, Mayor Barrio, yes, Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barry?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Callen?
Yes.
Councilmember Pepe's absent, councilmember Tartar?
Yes.
We're going out at 10:30.